I'd like to call to order our Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners meeting, our legislative meeting of December the eighth. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Bridget Jordan, Communications Manager. Chrissy, Regional Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Priven, Legal Counsel.
Thank you all so much. I am Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, President of the Board of Commission. We will start our legislative meetings like we always do, with silent prayer and after which, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, one moment for silent prayer, please. Keep them in order, if I can, so. Very good. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Our next item on the agenda, public comments. So we'll move forward, we have quite a few today. The first one I have is Hope Dudley. If you'd like to come forth, you have two minutes to speak. Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
My name is Hope Dudley. My son Daniel Chaz Dudley was murdered in 2007. The first time I visited the old coroner's office was in 2009 to collect his belongings. My next visit was in 2012, when I was introduced to Dr. Samar Cole and talked to her about our program. She was very accommodating and attentive during the visit. She wanted to know more to understand the journey that grieving families endure after the loss of a child or loved one. She understood that their bodies had been entrusted to her. Then I heard in 2014, Dr. Samar Cole wanted to replace the old forty year old crap it crowded building that already needed major updates, along with rebuilding the reputation of the coroner's office after twenty-five years of three lawsuits and twenty million dollars in settlements. The new Hamilton County Coroner attended to create a new facility. How can this be done since Dr. Samar Cole assumed the coroner's responsibility? Everything you see today was a vision, the heart of administrator to imagine the future. Today's facility in blue ass took the dedication of a visionary. The new Hamilton County Coroner Office have brought pride to our law enforcement community. When faced with the reality of creating a new beginning from the ground up, Dr. Samar Cole doubled down on the challenge. Former commissioners knew that it would take creative maneuvering to rebuild any serious deficiency of the coroner's office. This is why I used to work visionary to describe Dr. Samar Cole and has how she created the coroner's office in this region.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mike Trampy. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Mike Trampy. I'm the Director of the Crime Laboratory at Hamilton County Coroner's Office. I've been there for forty-three years, serving the Hamilton County. And under five different coroners, Dr. Frank Cleveland was the designer of the old building. And his name was rightly on that building. He was a world renowned forensic pathologist who started the crime laboratory. Dr. Owens worked there for five years. And now Dr. Samar Cole has been here eleven years. She is the one who put forth the work and trying to appropriate monies, designing the lab and constructing the new lab. I would like to put forth that I'm hoping that the commissioners can take your time and think of a, an appropriate way to honor the great man, Dr. Owens. He did a lot for the community. He was, his legacy is in fertility work. And he was a great speaker to young people about staying in school and staying off drugs. And I think there's probably a better way to honor that man. Maybe the memorial hall, maybe naming a street, some fertility building, a park, but something where people could appreciate him and his honor in a better way. I think if a name was to be put on the current coroner's office, it should be Dr. Samarcos. Because she is the one who works there and who did all the efforts to make that happen. So, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope that you can take your time and consider the best way to honor Dr. Owens.
Thank you, appreciate it. Tom Croft.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the MSD Mill Creek Community Advisory Panel, which recommends approval of MSD's proposed 2023 budget. However, the slow progress putting odor control assets on the ground at MSD Mill Creek is disappointing. Capital outlays at Mill Creek for odor control projects have been one point six million dollars over the past five years, I mean sixteen million dollars over the past five years and are scheduled to be about fifteen million for the next. This averages three million dollars per year, tiny in the context of a total capital budget well over a hundred million dollars. An example of slow progress is the long awaited sludge storage tank covers, which would provide inventory capacity when there are incinerator failures. Design was underway in 2020, but the project was put on hold due to increased estimated costs. Now we are to understand that it will be rolled into the de-watering building project. The de-watering building replacement project is itself a big critical project that has been delayed. The existing building and equipment are worn out. This project is not only a building, but a whole system dedicated to preparing and feeding sewage sludge to the incinerators. Including the sludge storage tank covers in this project, which would be more quickly accomplished if they were done separately as a separate project, makes it even more complex. The 2019 solids handling master plan had construction starting in 2023. The proposed 2023 CIP schedules now show construction in 2028. MSD is a huge enterprise with fifteen billion dollars in assets. Industry standards indicate annual capital spending of a hundred and fifty million for planning, design and construction. The proposed budget includes direct PDC about twenty-five percent below standard. Timely spending is vital to avoiding unacceptable system breakdowns. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Mark Blackman. I have the deeds here that the government has been hiding from the citizens. I am a victim of the government. You guys have been taking our property for years. They won't give me the, the, the booking page number right here. And then down here where we conveyed it over to the city is not even the right description in the deed when you guys took over it. Now Messer Construction Company owns it. My aunt owns Children Hospital and Ronald McDonald Hospital. I have that deed with me too. You guys went into a Peter Collins Senior's estate. The probate court has changed it to Peter Collins now. No one wants to look into the fry that you guys are doing. Here is the actual deed to Messer Construction Company. And it says that they own, we own five acres. So all this tax money, one, two, three, Ermun, that owns from all the way up to Herman, all the way back down to the other street. You guys are collecting a lot of tax money that you guys should not even be touching. When our lights go off, a regular citizen, you guys' lights stay on. Y'all, y'all guys are under the ground with electric. You got electric from under the ground. It's not, it's not right. Y'all only worried about dollars and cents for yourself that y'all can money launder to y'all kids through these LLCs that you guys are, are, are sending off and making and doing whatever you gotta do to get our money. You guys need to look into the money that you guys are stealing because you guys don't even know where it's coming from. You're just saying yes to the people that's giving y'all money. And y'all are not even in the house that you guys are owning. You all are, you all are doing revival code fifty-seven twenty-three dot oh one, breaking the law. You're all breaking federal laws because they give you the opportunity to break them. You don't have to break them, that's the devil's work when you breaking federal laws. That's the devil's work. You got the churches involved too. They're doing the devil's work. They're not working for God, they're working for the money that you guys are all stealing. Something needs to be done about this. I've been here, I've been born nineteen eighty-seven. Y'all can't say it's not y'all fault because y'all are in charge of and y'all are doing it too. So it is y'all fault, just like the generations before y'all, it was their fault too. Myron Bush was our probate state of lawyer. He got sued for not paying no Negroes and paying all white people. From their words, y'all go off of colors, we all are human. You shouldn't go off of blue, black, white, none of that.
Mr. Blackman, thank you for.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is my first time here, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I appreciate y'all. I got all paper, I want to leave y'all with this, I would like y'all to, I'll have copies.
Let me try to provide just a, a couple of solutions. Of course, we'll take the paperwork.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also recommend the treasurer's office is a good place.
Nobody wants to talk to me, they all keep saying go to the prosecutors, ma'am. Everybody act like they're not on the same page, no one in the city.
So have you been to the prosecutor?
I went to everybody, even United States of America, I went to everywhere. One word or wherever I gotta go, one court, I mean, the highest court, I wrote everybody in America.
So what I'd like to do, we certainly will take the paperwork and then we don't want, is that your, you have copies?
I got copies of everything.
Okay.
I'll come back and give you.
We'll give it to the clerk, I didn't want to take your only one, yeah. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I apologize, but.
It's okay. Scott Huber in Abercrombie.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome.
My name is Scott Huber, I'm the site civil engineer with Abercrombie and Associates. And I'm representing the applicant for the Breezy Acre Right Away Vacation that's under your public hearing agenda item.
Okay.
So I can talk, I can talk now or I can talk at the public hearing.
Either, either one, if you'd like to talk now or wait for the public hearing, it may be a while. So we can include it in there?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Joe Mallory, Coroner's Office. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Joe Mallory, I'm the Cincinnati NAACP President. And I'm here to speak in favor of the naming of the coroner's office in honor of Dr. Odell Owens. The breadth and depth of Dr. Owens' influence cannot be adequately measured because he had impacts beyond what we can quantify. He was not just one dimensional. He was multi-dimensional, his reach was broad and far. He was an innovator, an influencer, an icon and a visionary. Dr. Owens was a trusted source of information in the community because he was relational and not transactional. He was more interested in how he can make an impact collectively and not individually. His impact was felt in everything he put his time into. Before he became the coroner, most people could not even tell you who the coroner was. He elevated that office because of his presence and serving in it. He educated the community on what the office did. He spoke to youth everywhere because many were dying too young and encouraged them to dream. And he implored them to seek an education. And he would show up to shootings and passionately tell onlookers and bystanders, if you see something, say something. He encouraged them to get their education and didn't want them to end up in a body bag because of bad decisions they made. He believed in dignity in life and dignity in death. He was in high demand as a speaker and he was always well equipped and accurate with the facts and delivered his messages with passion. Everywhere Dr. Odell Owens went, he made a difference. He was a game changer and inspired others to action. He is someone is worthy of this honor of naming the coroner's office after him, regardless of whether or not other people feel that he didn't serve long enough in that office or he wasn't there when he built the new building. I just think that he should be honored in this way. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kevin Fan. Homelessness.
I got it. Separate from the public here. I'm Kevin Finn, I'm the President of Strategies and Homelessness. We oversee all services for the homeless in Hamilton County. Wanted to make sure that you all were aware that we were one of forty communities chosen two weeks ago to receive five million dollars from the Bezos Day One Families Fund. And five million dollars was the maximum that any community across the country received. A big part of us getting that funding was being able to show local support. And really the biggest local support that we've received over the last couple of years has been from Hamilton County. So, the stimulus money that you have put toward homeless services and various things that you have done to help with homelessness issues, that money has really already been multiplied because we got another five million dollars that is targeted specifically at family homelessness. And we're working with Bethany House and the various family serving agencies to decide how to best use that money alongside some of the ARPA funding that you all have allocated toward helping homeless families in particular. So, thank you. Because without the county's support, I don't think we would have gotten that. So, thanks.
Thank you so much and homelessness continues to be a priority for this board. So I thank you and congratulate you for that additional monies. We have Stefan Pryor is here, would like to speak about Dr. Odell Owens. Welcome.
How y'all doing? I said, how y'all doing, y'all doing all right? Okay, okay, get it back live up in here. The Justice Center. Y'all need to put some money behind that. It's dirty in there, it stinks. Paraphoons nasty, it need to be painted. Stuff coming out the vents, my cousin called me and told me. It's bad down there, you know. Deputy's probably getting sick. They might got COVID, we don't know. But I'm here for the good news. Mister Dr. Odell Owens. I was sitting in the back. I ain't meet the front of you Frank. Talking to Frank back there. And he told me a little history, say him and his wife was the first patient for Dr. Odell Owens. I think that's how you meet people, you talk to people that you don't know sometime when you're at places. And he said he was the first patient for your father. And that's a good thing. And we here to honor, ask you to honor him as the, the name the coroner's office after him. He's the first black man that was in the coroner's office. That's hard to do. And it, it look real, real genuine if y'all do that. Because he been in the zoo, interact for health. The first black African American executive office down here. And the Edgeworth Statue Committee. We need brothers like him and he's from the West End. It came from, y'all know the background, and to now. So y'all should honor him as the name. You did top baton like that, you got a whole building. We just asking the name of, 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 of a lab, crime lab, if I'm not mistaken. Top Baton name is everywhere, street sign, I want to city hall next for a street sign. But a street sign, a building, ain't nothing wrong just to rename a name. Please do that. I approve that message on TV, y'all, I love y'all, nothing y'all can do about it. Hold up. I love you Ms. Dreehouse, I love you, Ms. Stephanie Dumas, Ms. Alicia Reese, I love all y'all. Y'all can't do nothing about it, Ms. Tracy, I love y'all. Frank back there, shouts out to Frank.
Thank you.
HR guy, I love y'all guy.
And we love you, okay? Thank you so much for your comments. We're gonna move forward to comments and motions. And I would be the first one to comment. And I'm gonna make a couple of comments. I wish the people that were here that spoke about really not putting Dr. Owens' name on the building, I wish they had stayed. Because I'm sure they'll hear, hear comments from both of my colleagues as it relates to why it is so necessary and the right thing to do. So for my comments and motions, I'm gonna start with we have a resolution and it's fairly long. But that's because of all the things that he's done in this county and worldwide. And so we want you to hear every word that we have to say as it relates to Dr. Owens. So as I was thinking about what I was gonna say before we get to the resolution, I thought of Matthew seven sixteen. And it says, by their deeds, you will know them. And so I just want to say, I really did not know Dr. Owens. I mean, I would see him in passing, we would speak. But I really did not know him, but I knew him by his deeds. And that's the purpose of this resolution. I started thinking, this is a giant of a man and we need to do more. And we recognized him for Black History Month a couple of years ago. And then when he retired, we recognized him again, again and gave him a day. The thought of placing his name on the coroner's building came to pass way before he passed. We were thinking about what else can we do to honor this great man? And this was before his passing, as I said. I have received different notes, not very nice notes about making the decision for my colleagues if they're in agreement as it relates to honoring this great man. And so, but you know, threats don't bother me, not physical threats, I want to make that clear. But questioning my judgment and things like that does not bother me when I know that we're doing the right thing. The reason for the resolution is to make it official, to change the name, not to justify the decision. That's not why this resolution is, is so long. But how do you honor a person who created life? How about just leave that one in? He created life, if you look at his history. So we could just use that as a reason for submitting his name. So, I submit to you. Some people are confused. This certainly is not about a building. It's not about an inanimate object like a building. It's so much more and it's really not even about the person. It's about a life and a legacy of someone who gave their entire life to this community to make a difference. I appreciate the ability to sit here and listen to the comments that were made. I always say that out of the mouth, the heart speaks. And so I'm just really trying to, I was really trying to wrap my head around how there could be any dissension as it relates to this. But I'm not gonna try to understand or reason it. Because this board is going to make a decision. Now this board will speak through a resolution. I'm humbled to bring forth this resolution to honor the giant in our community. And as I said, I've gotten so many emails not to do this. And I'm certainly gonna stand by that. Some questions about if it's, you know, ethical for me to do it because I just got elected and Dr. Owens did contribute to my campaign, but not to me, I mean, he gave it to my office for my campaign. And as I said, I don't, didn't really even know him. But my deeds allowed him to make that decision. So the question was, can I even vote? Well, I will be voting today. We recognize Dr. Owens, as I said, back in March, we will continue to recognize him. And we're gonna recognize him today in a perpetual way. So he will be on the building and no one, no one can change that. And the county commissioners have the ability to do that. I'm gonna move forward because this resolution and allow my colleagues when we complete reading the resolution to say a few comments, okay? Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Resolution Honoring Former Hamilton County Coroner Odell Moreno Owens, MD, MPH. Whereas Odell Moreno Owens was born in Cincinnati, Ohio, December the seventh, nineteen forty-seven, raised in Cincinnati's West End and overcame unimaginable adversities, including poverty, racism and the passing of his mother leaving seven children with his father who struggled with drinking and gambling. And whereas Odell failed to maintain minimum requirements at the Wannon Hills High School, he transferred to Woodward High School and began doing work for a black surgeon, Dr. Clinton Buford and his wife, who eventually took him in, giving consistent encouragement to pursue education and assisted in charting a path to college. And whereas Odell earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Antioch College, studying his third year as an exchange student at Macary University in Kampala, Uganda. He went on to earn his Masters in Public Health and MD degrees from Yale University Medical School.
And, and whereas in nineteen seventy-six, after his first year of residency at Yale, he married Michelle K. Hall of Richmond, Indiana. Through this union, three children were born, Christopher, Justin and Morgan, who has joined us here today. Dr. Owens was a great husband, father, brother and friend. Whereas Dr. Owens completed his internship and residency in obstetrics and genealogy at Yale and was awarded the Irvin Friedman Award as the Outstanding Chief Resident in the Department of OB-GYN. And whereas Dr. Owens accepted a combined position at Harvard Medical School, serving as a clinical instructor in the Department of OB-GYN and was a fellow in reproductive endocrinology and infertility.
And whereas Dr. Owens returned to Cincinnati in nineteen eighty-two to establish the first division of reproductive endocrinology in the Department of OB-GYN at the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. During this time, he served in the medical school, established an in vitro fertilization program and achieved the Cincinnati's first successful conception and delivery. In November nineteen eighty-eight, he announced Cincinnati's first pregnancy from a frozen embryo and gave a welcome speech to the University of Cincinnati Medical Students for the twenty-nine consec, for twenty-nine consecutive years. And whereas Dr. Owens left his medical practice in two thousand and four to serve as medical director for a major insurance company and helped launch a Cincinnati-based nonprofit organization devoted to early childhood education. And whereas also in two thousand and four. And whereas also in two thousand and four, Dr. Owens was elected as the Hamilton County Coroner. Becoming the first African American to ever serve in this position. Dr. Owens was re-elected coroner in two thousand and eight. Setting a record at that time for receiving the most votes for any countywide candidate in the history of Hamilton County. Dr. Owens led a community-oriented coroner's office. Relevant even to youth, giving thousands of speeches to students. Educators, churches and nonprofits promoting the higher the education rate, the lower the homicide rate.
Whereas Dr. Owens became the fifth president of Cincinnati State Technical and Community College. Serving from August two thousand and ten until October twenty fifteen. He then served as the medical director and interim health commissioner for the city of Cincinnati. In October of twenty sixteen, he was named president and CEO of Interact for Health. Serving from October twenty sixteen until his retirement, March twenty twenty-one. And whereas Dr. Owens served as a member of many boards. Including, including the longest-serving board member of the Greater Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. Cincinnati Fire Foundation, US Bank, Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden. University of Cincinnati Board of Trustees, the Cincinnati Health Department. Project Grad, Graduation Really Achieves Dreams, a nonprofit collaborative of the Cincinnati Public Schools. The National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, Knowledge Works Foundation, Red Cross and the Fine Arts Board. He is the former president and chief executive officer of, of Rise Learning Solutions, Inc. A national nonprofit organization that uses technology to bring world-class training to adults who care for preschool-aged children. And whereas the Bicentennial Commission honored Dr. Owens. As one of the bicentennial's two hundred Greater Cincinnadians. In recognition of his community services. Black Enterprise Magazine selected Dr. Odell Owens as one of the top fifteen black doctors in America. He was named as honorary Kentucky Colonel and an Ohio Commodore. He has been honored with the Tree of Life Award by the Jewish National Fund. The Lincoln Award from the Northern Kentucky University, three honorary PhDs. And was the youngest person inducted into the Ohio Independent College Hall of Fame, uh, Hall of Excellence.
And whereas on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the awe-inspiring work of Dr. Owens. Which touched thousands of lives in Hamilton County across the nation and parts of the world came to a sudden and unexpected end. And whereas the name, life and legacy of Dr. Owens. From being born into poverty in Hamilton County to becoming a distinguished man of honor. And one of the top fifteen black doctors in America. And the first African American coroner in Hamilton County, Ohio, is worthy of honoring, remembering and commemorating. And whereas the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners is the owner of certain real property located. At forty-four seventy-seven Carver Woods Drive, Blue Ash, Ohio, four five two four two. Auditor's parcel number six twelve dash zero one two zero dash zero two zero four dash zero zero. Upon which parcel sits the facility that houses the Hamilton County Coroner and Crime Laboratory.
And whereas. The Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners desire to rename. The Coroner and Crime Laboratory in honor of Dr. Odell Moreno Owens upon his death. And now therefore, be it resolved. That the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio. Acknowledge and thank Dr. Odell Moreno Owens. For his decades of outstanding dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton County. Be it further resolved. That effective January the first twenty twenty-three. The Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby. Rename the Hamilton County Coroner and Crime Laboratory. Dr. Odell Moreno Owens Coroner's Office, Hamilton County Crime Laboratory. A perpetual memorial in recognition of Dr. Owens extraordinary. Professional career and decades of service to the citizens of Hamilton County. Be it further resolved. That the Hamilton County Administrator is hereby directed to take those actions. Which he deems necessary and appropriate. To affect the name change, including updates to building signage, the county website. Official documents, letterhead, etc. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the board certify copies of this resolution to the Hamilton County Administration. The Hamilton County Prosecutor, the Hamilton County Clerk of Courts, the Hamilton County Sheriff. The Hamilton County Coroner, the Hamilton County Recorder, the Hamilton County Auditor. The Hamilton County Engineer, the Hamilton County Treasurer, the Hamilton County Probate Court Judge. And the Presiding Judges of the Hamilton County Courts of Common Pleas Municipal Juvenile and Domestic Relations. Adopted at a regularly adjourned meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio. This eighth day of December, two thousand and twenty-two, and it is signed by all, both my colleagues. I was clapping anyway, I wanted. I'm clapping about what to, thank you, my chief of staff, so we have to vote, I'm just. I already said enough and we're gonna vote, I'm gonna allow, uh, not allow, ask you guys, so. I'm just so excited, so emotional, just so emotional. But we are the ones to vote.
We can vote personally.
Yeah, we're gonna vote. So at this time. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution that was, um, just read. Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehow?
Yes.
So I would, uh, ask my colleagues if they have any comments, Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, last week it was really tough, I made, um. A lot of comments about Dr. Odell Owens and his, what he has meant. Um, to me, this community and, and the world and, um. I wish I could replay it today, uh, but I made it through, it was difficult because at that time we were getting ready for the funeral. Um, I do want to acknowledge that his daughter is here, uh, Morgan. Um, and it takes a lot of, uh, strength. Uh, as one who I lost my mother and it takes a lot of strength when you lose a mother or a father to even walk. And get up and wanna face the world. And for her to be here today, uh, in honor of her father's legacy and what his, her father has meant to this entire. Um, this entire county and the world. Um, uh, we heard a lot about world renown. Uh, today in comments. And, um, as I had spoke at the funeral, one of the things I wanted to stress is sometimes when we have people that come from our community. Born and raised from the community, come from humble backgrounds and we tell our youth, you can. Dream beyond your circumstances, you can work your way up. But sometimes you ask, do we really mean it? Because when they overcome something. And we don't support it and sometimes we feel like someone's not world renowned because. They decided to stay when they didn't have to stay. He could have lived anywhere, we're talking two Ivy League colleges, most people can only try to hope to get in maybe one. He went into two Ivy League colleges at a time when African Americas, that was almost unheard of. And then to go into a, a field of fertility and then be an inventor. No one puts that with his title, he was an inventor. And America is about inventions and he invented something and co-invented something that created life. Uh, that wasn't, uh, something that already existed and he decided to bring it back to Cincinnati. Uh, and was at the University Medical Center, so, um, I think. I certainly support, um, this today. And I think, um, all of the things that he's been able to achieve, I mean, it's all these first, 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 and I think. Possibly if the word got out that there, you know, most people didn't show up because they thought this was a no-brainer. Uh, but when you look at all these awards. All these boards, how can you be a great living Cincinnatian and not be worthy to be on the building? How can you get all these awards from different organizations and these are supposed to be the top of the top blue chip organizations? How could you give all these awards and say then the person is not worthy to be on a building? So, uh, for me, it was, uh, uh, definitely a, a no-brainer. And I, it, it doesn't stop, you know, as life goes on, but I, I just wanna say, we didn't, this was, uh. Uh, I would say a cliff note version of his life. His life can't fit on LinkedIn, it can't fit on here, but when you start talking about, you know, one of the top doctors in the country. When you start talking about an inventor, when you start talking about the first to do almost every single thing. And still said, I wanna call Hamilton County my home. When to me, this guy's at a, he was at the level of Dr. Fauci in my, in, in my book. So, um, I just think most people thought it was a no-brainer. And I'm happy to, uh, have supported today, I also wanna recognize, uh, Tracy Artist, who is here some, uh. Didn't have the strength to really speak because a lot of people are still in mourning, uh, in the shock of his passing, so. And I wanna say one other thing, well, we were having a hard time getting African Americans to take the vaccine. And we had to find a credible source that could connect with the community that was reputable. And had the medical background and had that white coat on. He said, no, he was the one that went in there and really people convinced people. Because he had the credibility and he was willing to put his credibility on the line and a lot of people's lives are saved today because of it. So I did wanna add that to it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehow.
Thank you, um, I'm too, I'm proud to have known Odell and proud to have passed the resolution today, you know, um. I did not know Odell during his time when he was really a godsend to so many families. Who were having difficulty having children and I, I can't imagine how. Inspirational Odell was to those families coming in and saying, I will help you. You know, we're, we're gonna get this done, you're gonna have children and what a life-changing experience that was for the families, but also for Odell. Right, and being able to help in that way, I mean, uh, many of us are not gifted in that way. Um, and he took those gifts and made the most of it for himself and for others and really impacted the community. Um, I did know Odell though, when he started running, um, because I've been involved in politics for a long time. And, uh, when he ran for coroner, um, I didn't know Odell and I thought, who is this guy, I gotta meet this guy. Uh, and so then I had the opportunity many times to hear him speak as we all did. And Odell's, um, i- his language, his connection to the community, no matter who he was talking to. Was just, um, it was affirming to people, he, he talked in direct language. He was always challenging people, which he said about himself, he, he meant to challenge people. He meant to start conversations in this community that weren't being had about health outcomes for people, no matter who they were. And he was always inspirational and the last time I heard him talk was his CAA lunch, which, which was just a couple of months ago and. You know, he was on task, you know, he was, he was challenging people to do better and, and to think differently about. Um, their own health and the health of this community broadly, so I have a great deal of respect, uh, for him, for his memory. Um, thrilled that we're, we're naming something for Odell, he's certainly deserving of it and it is my pleasure to join my colleagues in this way to honor Odell Owens. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you both, and I just wanna make a comment when we, um. There are eight hundred thirty thousand people in Hamilton County. So I wanna make sure the news people are here and when we said there was, uh, some talk about we shouldn't do it and all that, it was. I received about seven emails, so I don't want it to be read or not that you guys would do it, that there was some outrage that they, people didn't want it. And it was said earlier that he got the most votes ever as a candidate when he ran for Hamilton County, so people in Hamilton County love. Uh, Dr. Odell Owens, so I thank everyone for coming and I appreciate all the support.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we're gonna move right along. And we have a public hearing coming up. Um, hearing to consider the vacation of Breezy Acres Drive, I know we have one speaker that wanted to come for you, wanted, uh. Eric, you wanna speak first?
Sure, I'll give a quick overview of what it is, this is the, uh, the public hearing. For the vacation of Breezy Acres in Colrain Township. Um, Breezy Acres is a dead-end street. Um, the petitioner owns all the property, um, totally around this street on both sides. And, um, we have, we have reviewed everything that's been submitted and, uh, don't have any comments on it. So it's open up for public comment now.
Sure, certainly. Where's the gentleman? Sure.
Eric, I just asked a question, um, so we've got the map in front of us, how long is the drive?
Um, Scott, you know how long Breezy Acres is? And this Breezy Acres is kinda hard to see on the plat, but it, it parallels I two seventy-five. It's just north of I two seventy-five and it runs kinda parallel to the O dot right away. Scott's looking up there.
I'm just saying, like a ballpark, just.
It's fifteen hundred, two thousand feet, thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred feet long.
Okay, great, thank you.
Scott.
Okay, Scott, would you like to come up?
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Huber, I'm with Abercrombie and Associates representing the applicant. Um, I, I really don't have a presentation other than, uh, just hope that you realize in your packets there that the Colrain Township Board of Trustees did. Pass a resolution in June of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, to vacate the street. And we're asking that the commissioners here today, um. Uh, agree with, uh, the county engineer and with the, uh, township trustees and, um. Decide to continue the process, I do have pictures if the commissioners are interested, I'm not sure if you made it out there or not. I have a, a three-page packet if you all would like to see that, uh, what the street looks like. If I could approach and submit it. Okay.
So as you were saying, Scott, the, uh, trustees approved, there's no, uh, impact on any sort of residential, um.
Yes, as you can see in the pictures in the packet, uh, basically it's an old, uh, concrete street, I'm, I'm not sure of the construction date. But as you flip through the packet, you'll see that there's no homes, there's no businesses, there's no occupied structures or any structures actually. That are on the road, so it's, it's really just a, uh, broken down, worn-out street with no, no occupiers.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from anyone in the audience? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehow?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next steps?
On my regular items, I'll be submitting either report, then we'll bring you the resolution at a, at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, okay, we have our next public hearing. A notice, uh, regarding the rehire of Sherry Hammonds as a child support technician in the Department of Children and Family Services. Hi Frank.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, this is the, uh, second part of a, um, process to rehire and then, um, a retiree into the same job that they occupied. Uh, that they were employed in, this is Ms. Hammonds, who was a child support technician. It's one of the job classifications that Job and Family Services has had difficulty recruiting, um, employees in, so we were happy to have the opportunity. To, uh, hire her back, um, we have, uh, satisfied the first, uh, requirement to. Uh, provide a sixty-day notice of our intent to hire her back and that was done back in October twenty-seventh. Um, with a resolution that was passed by the board. And this is now the second part of the process, which is a, uh, public hearing. Uh, fifteen to thirty days prior to the reemployment of Ms. Hammonds. And which would make her eligible for, um, uh, to be rehired in early January of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, thanks, I have a, uh, I guess it would be a policy question as it relates to, uh, you said we did this in October. Uh, didn't we do it for another, like maybe a facility worker or something or?
Um, we have had. We have had, we had a prior resolution, I believe it was for a purchasing, purchasing agent three, yes.
So my question is policy wise, is this going to be a pattern that people leave? They retire and they come back and so I can see that impact in our retirement fund. I know we need people, but.
Yeah, we've tried to restrict this to strategic jobs for which we've had difficulty either recruiting or to fill a short term, a short term need such as the one, the purchasing agent three. That was, that was considered to be a short term engagement to, for a transition for a new person to come in and do that work. And this, this particular job here is a, again, one of the critical job classifications at Job and Family Services that we've had difficulty recruiting qualified applicants for. But I would, I would not characterize it as a, as a trend or as a, a regular type of personnel action.
Yes.
Just briefly, and Frank said exactly what I'm about to say, but I just wanted to double down on it. We've made it very clear throughout the organization that this, these types of actions are only to be used in cases where we have either positions that are critical to public safety or, or the welfare of individuals in the county. In particular, where we're having trouble to recruit those individuals or in cases where, because we have, especially in small departments, when we're transitioning people out who are going to retire, that we have it as part of a transition plan. And those are broadly the only times that we, we use this strategy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would recommend educating our staff on how we're, how and when we're using that strategy. I happened to be in the building and I, someone from a different department and they were talking to someone as relates to, they keep bringing these retired people back, it's going to kill our retirement. Now, I'm not going to comment any, but they were a little angry about it, wasn't in this area. So I would just suggest that we educate our staff and let them know when and how we're doing it. I understand the reasoning behind it, but there is some little mumbling or grumbling going around about some of that that has already happened. Okay?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice President Reese?
Can I just ask a question then on that point, just so we're all clear? My understanding is this does not have an impact on our retirement system because this person would have retired one way or the other. And so the retirement isn't impacted by a decision like this, is it?
I'm not really certain on, on what the, I don't believe that, I can look into what the impact is on retirement. For instance, if we're required to, if the county is required to pay into the retirement system. I think there's another mechanism that's used in lieu of a county contribution to the retirement so that these people are getting some type of credit for their additional service or payment. But I'd have to look into that and I can, I can come back with a report to you on, on the impact on the retirement.
Yeah, I mean, if employees are, I mean, I just want to get, bring some clarity for all of us. So if we do get asked that question, we've got a, are the response.
I'll come back with a report on that.
So they do get additional monies because they can't technically retire. When they come back, they get paid for working, of course. And then they get additional monies that are going into the retirement that they would receive if they didn't come back. So I'd be interested in seeing that.
Okay.
Report. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have, the next public hearing is Community Development Block Grant.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Steve Gons with Planning and Development. Happy holiday season to you. I don't get to be in front of you very often at this time and thanks for all you do for the county. Today, we are here holding a public hearing about two grant applications for the Ohio Department of Development's Target of Opportunity Program. ODAD's Target of Opportunity Program is the statewide version of CDBG CV funds. Typically, Hamilton County and other jurisdictions that get a direct allocation of funds from HUD are not eligible to apply for HUD funds allocated through the state. This is not the case for these coronavirus funds. The first grant application you might recall from public hearings earlier this year. After those hearings, you passed a resolution authorizing the administration to apply for a grant to fund an expansion of the Lydia's House facility in Norwood. Inflation and revised cost estimates for the project have increased the grant request from original budget of $550,000 to 1.3 million. A resolution authorizing this change in grant request amount is included in your consent agenda. Are there any questions about this first application?
I have no questions. Do you have any questions?
No question.
Questions?
Thank you. After working with ODAD staff on the Lydia's House addition grant, ODAD staff informed us they had additional Target of Opportunity Funds available for other entities that had approached them for funding. To take advantage of these funds, we are preparing a second Target of Opportunity Grant application for food rescue and homeless services. Four food rescue entities, Last Mile Food Rescue, Tea Gun Farms, La Soup and Food for the Soul are each asking for $75,000 to improve or expand their operations. Strategies to End Homelessness is seeking $300,000 to help address the increased community need for shelter diversion. These funds will be used to cover salary and benefit costs associated with the additional personnel needed to meet this need. As you know, Kevin Finn with Strategies is here and he can answer any specific questions regarding their request. The ODAD process requires two public hearings before we can finalize our application for these funds. At the next public hearing for this second application, I will prepare a resolution for your consideration to authorize the administration to apply for these funds. Happy to answer any questions about either of these grants.
Thank you so much. So the second grant that includes Strategies to End Homelessness, $300,000 request, is that still necessary since they just got allocated the 5 million?
I'm happy to let Kevin.
He's looking at you to see.
Thank you for your questions. We're currently able to offer shelter diversion services to one out of every eight families who need them. So I think we can certainly use the additional $300,000. This would be $300,000 over how many years? Over one year. The ARPA funding that you all allocated to shelter diversion before has increased the program effectively by $750,000 a year. When we spread that money out over the length of time we have to use it. But, you know, we're still turning away one out of every seven families that could use shelter diversion services. And those services, again, just as a little refresher, targeted at families who are, have already lost their own housing and they are sleeping in doubled up situations on someone else's couch or floor, that sort of thing. And they're running out of couches or floors to sleep on. So we identify them when they first begin inquiring about getting into a family shelter. So about two out of every 10 families that reach out for assistance get placed into a shelter. One gets placed into, I'm sorry, one out of every 10 gets placed into a shelter. Another one to two gets placed into the shelter diversion program and the rest get turned away with nothing. So there is still a need for additional capacity in diversion services, which by the way, cost about a third as much as helping a family after they're homeless. So it's definitely the most cost effective way to address the problem as well. We entered into conversations with ODOD seeking additional funding. We were additional, first looking at a different pot of money and they pointed us to this particular pot of money. And county staff, particularly Steve, were nice enough to help with the request. But ODOD actually recommended that we apply for these funds.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. And Kevin, when we talk about homelessness, I know we're looking at families, we're looking at singles. And I can remember maybe a couple of years ago, you gave us an approximate number. You don't have to do it now, but it would be great to just see a chart that shows, you know, children and all the, and how many we're talking about when we talk about them.
By the year or by the day? We have about 850 people who are on the street or in a shelter in Hamilton County on any given night. We have about six, just over 6,000 people a year. So the homeless population turns over a number of times, about eight, nine times every year. So it's about 850 people on a given night, 6,000 a year.
So I would like that. And also I'd like to see the trends. I mean, is it getting any better? And so you don't have to communicate that now. I'd like to look at the numbers and see if the numbers are getting any better from the time we started to give additional monies to, to where it is now.
I'd be happy to get your report on that. We did see a 14% decline in homelessness in 2020 and 2021, largely due to the amount of stimulus funding that was available for things like eviction prevention and shelter diversion.
Thank you. That's helpful.
President, I, yeah, I just had, so these, from my understanding, I want to make sure I'm right in talking with the administrator, Mr. Aludo, these funds are pass through funds?
Yes, so these are, these are, these are grant funds from the state of Ohio, correct Steve? That would, would come through to us, correct?
That's correct. There are HUD funds, federal funds that get passed to the state that typically we aren't eligible for, but because they're CV coronavirus funds, we are eligible. So it is an odd one, you know, you, you might expect Maria Collins here to be in front of you talking about community development dollars, but because these are special ones from the state that we don't normally get. That's why we're handling it this way.
So I, for me, I think it's great because I, I feel we don't get our fair share from the state. I, I said that when I was the state rep, we were fighting for. So anytime we get more money is great. I think that the question that President Dumas asked is something good. I'd like to see those numbers because we want to feel like, you know, did we make an impact? Are we just, you know, we know that there's a problem and we want to know, were we able to make some diff, make a difference? What's the ROI? What's the impact? And the third thing I would like to see is that we're putting a lot of money into this and it's very important to impact and try to end homelessness. But when we come out the door, after we, you know, we vote on this money and it's given and we, you know, it's out there, we're doing this with, you know, helping homelessness. As soon as I walk out the door, every day it's the same three or four people who are asking me for some help. I want to see some folks, I don't know if we have that on the ground and can someone be around this area? It's usually around the Kroger area, around this area. Because it just seems odd, you know, that we are getting budgets and we putting our pen to it and we getting more money and we hearing those things that I think are great. But we need some navigator, I'm, I'm sure we have them around, but someone out in front of here because we have people that come in for different services to this building and probably also at Jobs and Family Services. And I just think it's just odd when I come out here and someone's saying, I need your help. But I'm like, wow, didn't I just vote for 5 million to where's the, where's the money at? And I'm sure it's out there, but if we could have someone around here that can help direct people to the right place and the right services as well. So, yeah, so I think that's, that's very important. I'd like to see as we're doing more, if you will.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is awesome.
Yeah. Commissioner Greenhouse?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I want to applaud the fact that we're getting this for the first time and, and raise that up because that's good news for all of us. As far as the homeless services, and this might be a question for Kevin. Under case management, it says three time or three full time case managers at partner organizations. Can you tell us who those partner organizations are if they've been identified?
Our current partners are Bethany House Services, Found House, which is the new name for the Interfaith Hospitality Network and the Free Store Food Bank. So those are our current three partner agencies. These CDBG dollars are a little different than some of the other funding that goes into the shelter diversion program. These dollars are most easily used for staffing. So the intent is to use these dollars to pay for the case management, which frees up other dollars such as the ones the commission has allocated previously to the program to be the direct assistance funding, paying rents and deposits and utilities and things like that for those families.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I just want to say, I know when, and I'm going to bring up Kevin's name again, but when he was here last year or whatever, and I was asking about how many homeless people there are. The numbers are not as large as we think, but they're, one is too many. And so, and a lot of the people that are homeless don't want to be in a facility. They don't want to be with other people. So, but as I said, one is too many. And if we can hit the ones that, that we see, it's great. But it really opened up my eyes when I talked to Kevin, when he presented that the numbers are not as large as we think, but they are already too large. So anyway, I'm going to make a motion to clo, you can stay up there because I'm going to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, well, closing the public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes. Thank you. So we need one additional public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, when can we plan on that?
Well, with the holiday schedule, it could be not until the beginning of the next year.
Okay, I didn't know about the timeline. So, okay.
Yes, that'll work fine. Thank you.
Okay, we have another public hearing, 2023 to 2027 MSD Capital Improvement Program and the 2023 MSD Operating Budget, Proposed Budget and Recommended Rates. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, commissioners. Okay, I'm here again today to talk about the MSD recommended operating and capital budgets and the additional discussion on MSD sewer rates. Oops, I think we are not at the beginning. Hang on. We just get the presentation to the right page. Is that not the? I don't know what is soon. Keep going. Okay, see if I can control it and go to the next slide. Okay, so let me just, I wanted to be mindful of everyone's time today since we had a long discussion last week about the budget requests themselves. And generally I'm going to recap the budget request and then go into a brief discussion on rates. I understand that Assistant Administrator Holly Christman is going to discuss rates as well. I did include the slides from last week in your packet, but I wasn't going to go through the, that in detail again today. So let me just quickly, you know, jump back into the discussion that we had about how MSD puts together its budget and, you know, the, the constraints that we're under and what we're trying to balance when we bring this forward to the county for review. As we all know, Cincinnati and greater Cincinnati and Hamilton County is not unlike many other cities in our country that are facing these challenges with our water and wastewater infrastructure. These aging systems are exceeding their useful life. And that means not only do we need to make capital investments to upgrade and improve them, but we also have rising costs to maintain them and keep them operating, you know, when they are beyond their useful life. So MSD is facing this reality as many other cities are. And that means when we're preparing our budget, we're working on that aging infrastructure being as proactive, as proactive as we can. We also have regulatory compliance, areas of regulatory compliance in addition to our consent decree where we are required to address combined sewer overflows and sanitary sewer overflows. But there are additional regulatory drivers that are being placed upon us through our permit process. And really just in the last week, there's been additional action by USCPA with respect to chemicals known as PFOS, where we really are going to see heightened obligations on us that will have costs in the coming future. It's a big topic in the wastewater industry. That in addition to when we build new assets, you know, we're expanding our service area and we're expanding our facilities. Also, as discussed, the O and M costs, the operating costs are rising due to increased labor costs and inflation. I'm just going to quickly touch on what I discussed last week with respect to the condition of our sewer system. We have a very large network of sewers, combined sewers and sanitary sewers through our, our county. They cover about 290 square miles. Only about 60% of those sewers have been inspected, meaning we've, you know, put some kind of camera or other physical inspection to know the condition of that system, of that sewer. We do know that 460 miles of our sewers are in extreme to high risk of failure. We are unable to keep up with the repairs that are needed to upgrade those sewers before they fail. Some of our sewers, as we've discussed previously, are over 50 years old and even up to 200 years old when Cincinnati was initially being developed. The pictures on the right just illustrate, you know, how difficult some of these repairs can be with these sewers. The, the Ray Street Repair is right along the street car tracks. Those are repairs where we have to conduct the work. Those are repairs where we have to conduct the work at nighttime. It's very difficult and can be very costly. The other repairs are when we're really close to foundations, sometimes even under homes. And then the one on the bottom, Spooky Hollow, is an is an elevated aerial sewer that was leaking into that creek and required an emergency repair. So we know that, again, our system is aging. What type of investment is needed? Industry standards show that based on estimates of the assets that we have, which total really, this is an estimate from several years ago totaling them at thirteen billion. We we know that it's higher than that, but assuming thirteen billion dollars worth of assets in industry standards, we should be investing one hundred and fifty million per year to upgrade this infrastructure. However, our annual capital investment for these projects, for the planning, design and construction of of new infrastructure is really, has been about a hundred million. So that is fifty percent less than industry standards. Currently, our CIP request, and again, the Capital Improvement Program, the Capital Improvement Program includes a five-year plan. We are only, the board only approves funding for one year. So focusing on the two thousand and twenty-three capital request, the total request is a hundred and forty million, hundred and forty point five million dollars. That is for thirty-one projects in planning and design, eight projects that would proceed into construction and five construction allowances. As a reminder, when the board appropriates the capital budget, it is only taking action on those planning and design and construction allowance projects. Any individual projects that are proceeding into the construction phase come back before the board for review and approval prior to us advancing to those projects out to bid. Quickly, I'm going to move into the operating budget request. The overall operating budget request is two hundred and thirty-five point five million dollars. That is broken out by the following areas of personnel, non-personnel. And then we have a general fund overhead fleet and office technology equipment category. The sewer backup non-personnel is pulled out from our general non-personnel category and our debt service payment. Again, in total, the request for two thousand and twenty-three is two hundred and thirty-five point five million, and you can see there the comparison over the last two years. When MSD puts together its budget, we start this process early in the year. We have seven divisions and each division has a superintendent or a division manager, which is really our subject matter expert on that division's needs. So we have treatment division, wastewater collection division, we have our compliance services division that houses all our lab, our lab services and safety and regulatory obligations. We have our engineering, finance and accounting, IT and the office of the director. I think I got them all. But so each of those divisions builds their budget based on the known needs and expenditures from prior years and then takes into account any known increases that they are requesting for the following year. When we start that process early in the summer, each division's budget then comes to myself and the deputy directors for review. And this year, you know, when we initially got the budget request from the divisions, we already knew that we were under constraints in terms of these rising costs, and we told them, you know, there are many things that were not going to be included in the budget request when it got to the board. So you know, just to be clear, the the needs of the utility as expressed by those that are managing it and running the operations every day are greater than the budget request that was initially delivered, knowing that we really do have affordability constraints. However, the the biggest challenge really for the two thousand and twenty-three budget are the inflationary impacts that are impacting MSD's operations. We are having rising costs as everyone is, and nearly all aspects have our operations, chemicals, utilities. These are all things that are necessary to keep our our treatment plants running twenty-four seven. Equipment parts, not only are we still facing supply chain disruption, but those costs are just have risen dramatically. Chemical costs alone are over one million, greater than they were in two thousand and twenty-two. We have, again, utilities, nearly a million dollar increase. Overall, there, you know, the overall inflation reports for this year are about eight point three percent. So a little deeper into MSD's operate, operating budget, there has been a really, I guess we had some discussion last week on the personnel, so I just wanted to dig into that a little greater. So the personnel budget, which again, we, I don't have the numbers in front of me. So our personnel request from the August or from the November date was sixty-five point five million. That that covers the existing funded MSD positions that did have a negotiated salary increase through our our labor union negotiations. So we build that budget with a projection that covers the salaries for all of the existing funded position, which includes those cost of living adjustments, overtime, healthcare expenses, pension, deferred comp, all of those factors build our base budget. We then are able to reduce our overall personnel budget by a known capital labor reimbursement in our engineering division and an overall position vacancy allowance. So while at any given time MSD may have forty or more vacancies, and lately we've been trending higher, we do not seek funding for all of the positions that are on our table of organization. So I I wanted to get more information in response to the the question that Commissioner Drehouse asked last week, but this is just kind of an initial snapshot. So we can, we are showing here the, what we are seeking funding for in terms of full-time employees. So over the last five years, we've remained generally in that six hundred and thirty funded positions. However, on our TO, the positions that we are at any point in time seeking to fill are about forty positions greater than that. So we never really know where the vacancies will occur and when they will occur. So we are always, we have more positions on our TO, on our management organization that are funded based on that forty, approximately forty FTE position vacancy allowance. So again, going back to what we requested currently, we requested the personnel budget needed to just pay for the employees that we have and all of the funded positions that we have minus the vacancy allowance, minus the capital labor reimbursement. But we did add about five hundred thousand dollars additional funding this year to cover the hiring of critical maintenance and operations staff for our wastewater treatment division. That would be really dependent on the final decision of the operating budget, whether we're able to move forward with that. We also, though, you know, have existing vacancies in those areas and are, you know, continually trying to to fill those positions. Previously, I was stating how we build our budget from the beginning. We get more requests than we ultimately bring to the board from our divisions and from our superintendents. Ultimately, what we submitted and the current request really only has the most critical increases incorporated into it. So those costs I've already mentioned that are the known increases in those chemicals and disposals and utilities generally. There were other requests that were not included when we submitted the budget. So I'm going to turn to the sewer rates, which is in addition to what we discussed last week. And before I talk about MSD sewer rates, I did just want to reference an index from the, from NACWA, which is the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, which are wastewater utilities across the United States. They do a a lot of reporting and benchmarking. Every year they do a cost of clean water index. So the most recent publication is through two thousand and twenty-one. And and they do report that the annual average charge for wastewater services, what customers are charged for that treatment and collection of wastewater rose three point one percent in two thousand and twenty-one. So that was the national average. They are predicting that in two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-six, the national average will be about four percent increases annually. So again, that's, you know, talking about the entire country, but just thought it was a relevant reference before we talk about MSD sewer rates. And as you know, I think the most, you know, I guess, probably counter to many other of our counterparts around us, we have not had a sewer rate increase since two thousand and fifteen. Annually, what MSD presents or provides to the county with respect to the sewer rates is a comprehensive wastewater revenue requirement study, simply the rate study. And we deliver that during the budget process. As part of that, MSD really for the last several years has been communicating a stated desire for a modest increase. Our desire was to have an increase before we dipped below certain financial indicators of just one to two percent, really to avoid any kind of rate hike that would be more challenging for our ratepayers, you know, it to to do all at once. We are now in two thousand and twenty, you know, looking at two thousand and twenty-three. And the rate study that was provided did suggest, again, that a rate increase is needed. There, I just included some language from this year's rate study, which really illustrates that with the increases that I've just discussed in our O and M, our CIP, the associated cash financing and debt service, and the need to maintain adequate reserves suggests that a series of annual revenue adjustments are necessary during two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-seven. Importantly, we are just discussing rates for two thousand and twenty-three at this time. I don't believe that the remainder of the 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 five-year period is able to be determined until there's additional information and decisions on the consent decree phase two schedule and costs. So at this time, after working through the information that we have on our, from our rate study and the county's financial policies and both of our financial advisors, we've spent a lot of time reviewing and discussing this information. And we are aligned with the need for a three percent system-wide rate increase to meet the revenue requirements of MSD. Can this would be effective? If approved, it could be effective January one, two thousand and twenty-three. The revenue increase this year, again, is really, the primary driver is the capital program requirements and the impact of those costs on our key financial indicators. These are things like maintaining maintaining sixty days of operating expenditures, maintaining the required debt service coverage to meet our bond covenants, achieving total debt service coverage at or above the stated levels by the county's financial advisor, maintaining liquidity liquidity in the surplus fund. And we do feel as though a three percent revenue increase is enough funding for our budget requests for two thousand and twenty-three. However, moving forward, again, there's a big unknown in terms of the size and and schedule of a capital program going forward and whether and how soon additional rate increases may be required will really depend on that, along with other factors. So the additional reductions have been, additional reductions have been recommended by the county. We have been working very carefully to review the budget that has already been provided to the board. Again, when we focus on our O and M, meaning just our personnel and non-personnel and the other category without our SBU and debt service, the the MSD request, I'm sorry, the county request is that MSD reduce an additional four million from what is included in the November eighteenth budget request. We have, again, been working very carefully, but our challenge to identify four million worth of cuts that do not have an immediate impact on our operations or result in personnel reductions is a real challenge at this time. I understand that this is desired, again, really to meet the county's desired financial indicators and financial targets with only a three percent rate increase. However, I want to point out that since that budget was submitted, the draft budget was submitted on August fifteenth, we have already reduced it by two point three five million in an effort to align with the initial target, which was one hundred and thirty-eight point one million. I understand that was presented to us in July. And at this time, the county is, you know, suggesting we meet one hundred and thirty-six million to get to the the not November eighteenth O and M budget. These are some of the areas where we already cut and found things that, you know, again, would not have those immediate operational impacts or impacts to our personnel. I did want to just suggest that when looking at how the the overall balance of the operating budget and the rates and the capital program, there are other, there are many variables variables at play, but there are other alternatives in terms of meeting certain key financial indicators that the county desires. One would be reducing the SBU contingency budget. As discussed last time, the SBU program is funded at a level that is really very dependent on weather-related events. It is a budget that we can predict, we can know, once we understand the weather patterns, like, you know, maybe second or third quarter where we would be for the year and determine whether or not additional funding would be needed. There wouldn't, at any time, if we reduce the SBU budget, be any issue with responding to any emergency events. We also have not discussed or looked at reducing the capital budget, but it is another tool that we have in terms of balancing those rate requirements and and the budget that is passed in two thousand and twenty-three. I do not intend to go through all the slides that I delivered last time. I did just include them in here. And I just want to reiterate, you know, the the folks at MSD that are working hard every day to keep equipment running, to keep our plants in service, to pay all our bills, you know, I'm just one person standing here, but they're all, they're all doing an outstanding job in a pretty tough environment, and I want to thank them. And just thank you all for the time here today. Did not have anything else to present. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. I do, and thank you, Director Christie, for that updated presentation and her work and collaboration over the past few weeks on this, on this budget. So I'm just going to just dive just very briefly into some supplemental information about the rates and to reiterate a couple of things. One, with the CIP budget that Director Christie discussed, I just wanted to make sure the board is aware that the county team is supportive of that request of a hundred and forty point five million with forty-four projects. And I do want to thank the the MSD team and the county team for working very closely on this CIP request. Many of them are here. You have Director Christie, Jenny Richmond, Joseph Schuster, Karen Ball and and Joe Graff. I just want to thank them for that. We talked, I know Director Christie already went through the operating budget request. And as she noted, the original request was a hundred and forty-one nine. And again, a lot of work has been put in to try and bring that request down. And again, I want to thank MSD and our county team for their work on that. But when it comes to to setting rates, as Director Christie mentioned, there are, you know, many things and factors that we look into. That includes operating expenses, which you've already heard about, capital plan you've heard about, as well as debt coverage and liquidity. And I know Director Christie hit a couple of those, but just want to share a little bit more details. MSD, we're very proud to to say maintains a strong credit rating. And their debt service coverage, as well as their surplus fund, have been cited as major factors in that great rating that we have. And if deteriorated, you know, there's a potential, of course, for a downgrade. And any new debt that would be issued would be, as Diana Christie mentioned, part of that operating budget when it comes to debt service payments. So for these reasons and based on our financial advisors, we do try and maintain right around a one point seven coverage. You can see over the past years, it's understandable, it's going to go up and down over the years, but we try and make, you know, aim for that with the understanding that it may dip a little from time to time. The liquidity you can see here, this is unencumbered surplus fund for MSD. Again, these are critical for credit strength. And we typically aim for a balanced target of one year's worth of CIP projects plus one month's worth of operating expenses plus fifty million dollars. And you can see over the years, this this surplus fund is is reducing as more and more projects are being completed. And as, as already mentioned, the board has not authorized a rate increase for several years, and that there there are primary reasons for that, and a few of which I've already discussed, which include, as you can see here, the surplus fund well exceeded its its balance. Budgeted funds were not spent at anticipated rates and debt service coverage remained very strong. So as Director Christie mentioned, we did receive a rate analysis review. We have been working with MSD closely, especially over the past few weeks on that. The initial one that was submitted was, as you can see here, with the requested budget. And in order to maintain those levels that we've all talked about from from a financial standpoint, the rate increase would be seven point
And in order to maintain those levels that we've all talked about from from a financial standpoint, the rate increase would be seven point two five percent. We do recognize to balance the need for a rate increase with with economic realities of many of our rate payers. So administration thought that this size of a rate increase at this time was too high. So we did work with some other scenarios that I know the board received last week as well as early this week. So we wanted to take the the rate increase down to potentially three percent and see what that did amongst various scenarios. You can see with MSD's requested budget, including the the O and M of one hundred and thirty nine point nine, a three percent rate increase would take our debt debt service coverage down a little lower than what's comfortable for our team, our financial team. We looked at another option of, okay, how what can we do to up that debt service coverage? But still recognizing the need to have a lower rate increase, we looked at reducing the operations and maintenance budget by six million from their request. And we did feel in talking to MSD, and I think Director Christie articulated that that's a larger cut, I think, than they're comfortable with based on their operational needs. So then we looked at one last, another one, which was, as Director Christie mentioned, reducing the O and M budget by four million down to one hundred and thirty six. And we feel this would still be a three percent rate increase with debt service coverage right around that mid one sixty coverage. One that we have talked to our financial advisors about, they feel relatively comfortable with this, knowing the potential that it would be coupled with a possible rate increase. I will say that we also looked, and I believe the the board received this as well, that maintaining debt service coverage without a rate increase would would result in a substantial reduction to MSD's budget. One that administration does feel in talking with MSD, that would be a substantial detriment to the operations of the utility and one that would not be recommended by administration. I'll also say, though, just for for your information, again, I believe this was shared on Monday. If MSD's recommended budget was approved with no rate increase, that debt service coverage would drop to about one point five three times, which is extremely low compared to where we would like to be. So based on all this information provided by MSD, our county team, financial advisors, we do rec, administration does recognize the the need for a rate increase to meet the current operational needs of MSD, continue their operations with also the understanding that we're trying to balance this with our rate payers and affordability. So that's what this recommended rate increase attempts to to remedy for. And you can see here, the recommended operating budget, then we do also recommend reducing that down to the O and M down to one hundred and thirty six million. Again, as Director Christie mentioned, this is this may be difficult for them, given what the the information that she shared. I would say this, we had this a similar conversation last year where MSD has started doing quarterly financial reporting. We share that with the board. They come and and present on that. So that does give an opportunity. If if we or MSD does see significant increase in costs, we have time to communicate with the board and discuss if there's a need for a potential additional funding at that time. So that was my comments. I just wanted to make sure that the board understood where the administration's recommendation is in in collaboration with MSD. Again, I want to thank all the MSD team that's here as well as the county team and our financial advisors who have have been tremendous to work with on this on this project. With that, I guess we're all available to answer any questions or if you want to take public comment.
Certainly. Is there any public here that would like to speak for the public hearing? Yes.
I've already spoken, but my comments was on the budget. I just want to make sure that 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 was.
Yeah, it has been recorded.
This, et cetera. And if if I might have the privilege of for just to make one emphasized point that maybe got lost over.
Why don't you come up just for a couple minutes? Okay.
I I don't expect to even take a couple of minutes, but we'll say that two things. First of all, I mentioned the sludge storage cover project. I know this is really way down in the weeds. But I I think it's important, based on discussion that we had last night at our community advisory panel meeting, that it be understood that that project needs to be accelerated. It's when it will occur is not clear from the budget documentation. So I'm just making that point. I'm sure we can work that out going forward, but I'd like to raise that point. The other thing was I did not recite the last two sentences of my comment, and and that was the the recognition that it's challenging to continue without any rate increases. It's evident for the reasons that have been discussed. I mean, the burst of inflation that we've experienced and the EPA consent decree phase to make increases inevitable, at least from an outsider's point of view. Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I just have a couple of questions. Well, comment first. It's obvious to me the collaboration that's taken place between MSD and our staff. And so it's just really great to see. Even though, you know, some people think it's been going on forever, but I can see it. We go from, you know, seven point two five to a to a suggested three percent rate increases is is major. Just had a maybe two questions, Diana. As it relates to personnel, you were saying you're you're like forty short in personnel. I was wondering, is that direct service personnel or is that executive that you're short on?
Yeah, so I was mentioning that we generally, and in fact, our budget incorporates that we will always have about forty positions vacant. That is, that is pretty standard for a utility like ours, the type of positions, the number of staff that we have. So retirements and other reasons that people come and go. So that's not that in and of itself wasn't meant to imply that there's a shortage of forty. It's really just how we develop the budget and how we come to that number of the actual funded positions, which is in the six hundred and thirty which is different than if I showed you and I was putting something together, the list of all the positions that we have per division totals something more around six hundred and seventy or so. We do, though, given the fact that, you know, it is standard to have forty or so vacancies, we've actually had higher than that in the last couple of years, particularly following the pandemic. But really, it's always a challenge, but now it's even, it seems to be even more of a challenge for us to kind of get back to where we're more comfortable and fill those positions. It's hard to find skilled labor for a lot of our maintenance and operator positions. It's hard to replace the people that, you know, have been with us for a long time and are moving on and retiring. We don't find that in the workforce today where people stay, you know, come to a job with on the city or utility and stay for thirty-plus years. So it's been a challenge. The labor shortages are real, but it's that forty is pretty standard. Yes.
And then I was looking personnel covers negotiated salary increases of five, four, and three. Is that what the union has agreed on? I know we haven't, have we signed anything with the union?
No, that's already, yes, that's been agreed upon, and it was five percent already in twenty twenty two, four in twenty twenty three, and then three the following year.
Okay. So I I know I wrote a note to Jeff about the four percent. Could it be a three percent? But if we've already negotiated it, there's not very much we can do about that.
Yeah, excuse me, Madam President. So under the sixty-eight agreement that we are still technically bound to in terms of our agreement with MSD, the the city does operate the utility and that includes the negotiations and collective bargaining, et cetera. So those costs are essentially passed through to us when they come in.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I believe I heard you say if we had to, there could be a reduction of SBU, the budget of SBU, because we're not using all of it, but if we had to reduce it somewhat, that we could.
Yes, so we've been working, as you said, closely, and Holly and I have been talking a lot about this. I, you know, the the idea of cutting another four million, I have already gone through and with Joseph and Jenny and everyone's help, identified two million off of the O and M portion of the budget. Some a little bit on personnel, really playing with that vacancy credit and non-personnel that while, you know, not comfortable, I don't think create immediate challenges to us. It could result in the need for additional funding some point in the year, but finding another two million is really, we're not there yet. We're we're working on it. We hope to be able to, you know, to get there if that is the direction that the county wants us to go without creating, you know, any kind of immediate impact. But one suggestion I had was the SBU budget really does have a lot of contingency built in that, you know, may or may not be needed. And so again, it would be something where it doesn't really present an immediate impact to our operations or personnel, and we would know during the year when and if we need that and assume we would have the board's support on that. So that that was why I was suggesting that is that, you know, we're working on the two. Another two is is challenging, and that was just another suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate your presentation and your collaboration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I want to preference my comments with my focus is fighting as hard as I can for the taxpayers overall, not just on MSD, but the taxpayers in January will be hit very hard. They've got a property tax bill is going to hit them. January is always usually a slow month for people who don't work a nine-to-five job. And it's a very difficult month, small business owners, et cetera. So January hits and they get hit hard with a higher tax bill. Then January hits and the new year comes in and now we've got a rate increase. And even though we are doing the best we can to try to squeeze in public hearing on this one or two, and I appreciate that, I still don't think it's had the proper promotion to most people knowing that they're going to have a rate increase unless you're in an organization like you are, sir, that's on top of this. I was at the grocery store. And someone said, how's it going? And I started talking to him and told him about their, they asked me about the property tax, but they give the thirty percent this year. I said, no, that was voted down. They said, what? I said, yeah, and I said, and we're getting ready to look at your rate. Would you want your rate to go up in MSD? He said, no. I said, we got a public hearing. He said, well, I can't squeeze it in because I'm trying to, I got my job, I got my kids. But please let them know I'm not for the rate increase right now. So while I do appreciate the collaboration as been stated, I'm not, I want collaboration, but I want us to try to work and we are doing it, but we got to go back to the drawing board, in my opinion, to see how we can hold the rate for this year and then give us time as Administrator Aludo said in the past, when the federal folks came down with the consent decree, there were meetings for suburbs, different organizations throughout the whole year to let people know what's really going on. And some will say, we had those meetings back in, you know, ten years ago. People don't remember ten days ago. And I think that we needed time to really go over all of this again, where people on multiple levels and multiple platforms, multiple type of meetings could get prepared that we're getting ready to go up. So I had asked, we've come a long way. I think originally, I understand behind the scenes, it was a twelve percent. And there was pushback from the county on that. And then it came back and administrator had a memo and he had seven percent, a little over seven percent. And now, and then he put one scenario could be three percent. I have asked for another scenario to be looked upon, and I hope that I'm not like the football game, the clock run out on me. But I asked to look at, can we use ARPA money creatively? I'm looking at being as creative, non-traditional as possible. That's what the people are doing at home. They're being real creative with the checkbooks, trying to make this stretch so that could stretch. Can we look at ARPA to maybe hold us for this year? And be able to then have a whole year of these hearings and outreaches and so people know what's getting ready to possibly hit them, not Christmas time, which is where we're at now. Most people they 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 turned on Mariah Carey now and they're they're on the Christmas. And then they get hit in January and say, when did this high bill come in? So I wanted to ask the administrator where we are on ARPA. Because I at least like my colleagues to be able to see it. I don't know if they made their decision already, but at least be able to consider all options if that's a potential option.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President. We staff met with our, we have an ARPA compliance consultant that we use specifically to determine whether eligible uses of ARPA funds or eligible uses of funds are eligible under the ARPA rules. The Treasury Department rules on the use of ARPA funds are extensive, as the board is aware, we've talked about before. So we met with them yesterday. Assistant Administrator Holly Christman led that meeting with with our ARPA consultant and the prosecutor's office. So we are looking into that. They are still exploring it. We should know something very soon, whether it's hopefully, Holly, I don't know if we're expecting something today, tomorrow.
We're hoping by no later than Tuesday.
Okay.
But to the to the point that we still have an additional public hearing on the budget and rates, so I don't think the clock is going to run out before we have that.
Thank you. I just wanted to put that on. I wanted to comb everything, look up under every cover we could find to see if there was any other opportunity to, my my goal is to hold the rate, give a whole year of these town halls or what have you, educating people, bringing them up to speed with, you know, the federal responsibilities that we have. A lot of people still don't understand how MSD works. A lot of people don't know that we own the utility, the county, so we got to pay for it and that the city, the employees are city employees. A lot of people don't understand that. So just wanted to make sure that we can re-educate, we can put the proper time, because I know we've got so many other budgetary things and it's kind of coming in in the fourth quarter to most people feeling that any type of increase, because they haven't had increases in a while, so they never had to keep, you know, keep their eye on this, because this was not something that they had to deal with for the last couple of years. I do have some other questions, though. We talked about three percent. This is in the, is this the operation, the recommendation is three percent increase? Is that just to pay for the operation budget?
The three percent is to cover the totality of MSD's revenue needs, meaning the operations, the capital, the debt payment, everything.
Okay. And I just want to make sure you do the three percent. Will we have another increase at all in twenty twenty three? You're saying that's it for twenty three?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's all that's before the board is.
Okay, because I.
Related, that would, yeah, it would just be the the rate that would be legislated by the board. So that would be the only rate increase.
But will they have to look forward to some additional potential rate increases coming up with consent decree? We got, I want to be able to look at, I don't want people to say, I thought you said three percent, now you at ten percent or what have you in the future.
I'll hit on this as briefly, Director Christie can tag on, but I think from the administration's perspective, we know that the driving force ultimately, we're talking really about a one-year rate, one-year increase scenario related only to next year and the needs for next year. But we know that at the end of the day, the driving force is behind the rates and future rate increases is going to be the capital associated with phase two of the consent decree, and especially as that starts to load into the budget through additional debt issuances and the increase in debt service and the operating budget. I would, yes, I would absolutely say that we would anticipate additional increases in future years based upon that, the that negotiated phase two with the federal regulators. And I and I do, to that point, and you kind of provided me with an opportunity to to say this, Commissioner, so I hope you don't mind me taking the opportunity to folks watching at home, this is not the Board of County Commissioners or MSD or City Council saying, hey, go out and do this. This is the federal regulators, the US government saying you have to go out and repair this system and you are under a consent decree and an order to go out and do it. And you must raise the rates in order to do it. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility there other than to negotiate the best possible deal with the regulators that we can.
Got you. The other thing, I I did have a question on last year, and maybe it's covered in your presentation. But last year, we had approved a budget and then we came back because city council had an increase, or was that just the union? City Council had an increase or was that just the union negotiation or was that the overall? And do we anticipate that this year? We had put a number in and that was, we did an increase, but. City Hall did an additional increase and we had to come back and put more money in, into this budget. Is that? Done or is that something that might come back?
So the, the action that we had the board take this year was an adjustment to what was approved. So it was a result of some of the salary negotiations. Those are complete. My understanding, that's a three-year collective bargaining agreement. But it really, we had to move money from, you know, one division, one area, personnel, non-personnel, but we didn't. We ultimately were able to make that adjustment without having additional funds appropriated.
Okay, okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure.
And I, yeah, so there shouldn't be, yeah, any kind of, we've really already. Factored in that full negotiated increase, both represented and the potential debt, or I guess it's already. Most of the other cost of living adjustments have been made, you know, at least through the end of twenty twenty-three for the operating budget.
Got you. And then they also mentioned in the last hearing that the. All of the projects, if you will. You said we had allocated, we're up to date, but is up to date in terms of it's scheduled? Are we up to date in terms of completion date?
Yeah. So with respect to our capital budget for twenty twenty-two, yes, that what, what Ryan Welsh, our chief engineer, had reported was that we've. We will have spent likely all of the capital budget, meaning we've begun that work. You know, encumbered that money to our contracts. So they're all underway as predicted this year. The overall completion of projects isn't, you know, that's. An ongoing process with, you know, the phases over several years. So you can't really look at it on a year-to-year basis. And our project schedules do and have moved. Sometimes just, that's really just a decision that we make in the beginning to determine what, how long a schedule is. And then we learn as we move along that that's not realistic. So. All of the projects, you know, we have over a hundred, somewhere around a hundred and forty are in various stages of completion.
I think that's important because a lot of the citizens. Especially the few that say, yeah, go ahead and raise the rate. They expect in these projects to be completed. They want to know on time, not, you know. I know they have different phases of when they're supposed to be finished, but some say this is going to be finished by twenty twenty-five. Or they're going to expect that or twenty twenty-four. To me, for me, it'll help me kind of have a, a understanding that, you know, your project is on schedule, on time, and will be completed. In twenty twenty-four, what have you. I'm just throwing that out as an example. But that would be helpful.
Yeah, yes, we are. We have been compiling reports and have like a complete project list that shows phases. I think we're constantly trying to improve that. To get you and the public, the information they need, what they have, and, you know, questions about the status of particular projects. So. We're certainly, you know, trying to make that available and would be, you know, open to discussing and working towards that further. In twenty twenty-three.
Holly, you mentioned in your presentation that if they have to come back. We could come back. I want to understand the comeback. Terms of the budget, that was your comment.
Yes, I think the idea of. Taking their operating and maintenance budget down to the, by four million. Feedback we've received from MSD is that is going to be tough. Based on their, their operational needs. And what we, I believe, did last year when we reduced their budget as well is we helped, they implemented MSD implemented quarterly financial reporting that. Where the board receives. That way we can easily quickly monitor to see if. Budgets are coming in greater than anticipated or greater than budgeted, expenses are coming in greater than budgeted. And we can bring that forward to the board for a discussion on potentially appropriating additional funding if it's needed.
Where will we get it?
It would, it would have to come from their, I guess, surplus line.
From their existing budget.
Yeah.
From the existing budget that's passed. Okay, got you. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, and thank you both for your presentations. I also appreciate the collaboration that's being shown in the representation of the three percent increase. So some things I just. I'm just kicking around since last time we met for a public hearing related to MSD. I asked Holly and I've asked Diana this in the past, when we talk about ARPA funding. The ARPA funding, I think that's being referred to. By Commissioner Reese is the ARPA funding that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner. The ARPA funding that the county received from the federal government. There is also ARPA funding. For infrastructure. For sewers and, and systems. And so I, I don't remember when it was, Diane, I was at a, a meeting up in Columbus and they were talking about this funding being available. And we didn't, we, we applied for the money. We didn't get the money, which I will tell you is a big frustration for me because, you know, you sit in these meetings and they talk all about. This funding, but it's running through the state. And so the state puts criteria on this funding that's coming down from the federal government. And because, correct me if I'm wrong, because of the criteria that's been established by the state, we don't. Get the funding. So here we are, because, because that's another place to look outside of our own ARPA. You know, the ARPA that's in these big, huge pots. So I don't know if that's going to change. I mean, I, you know, I sit in the CCAO meetings and are, I'm constantly. Talking about how. While rural. Communities need these kinds of dollars, so do the urban communities. And because we've got these aging systems. So, so far we have not received any relief from. The federal ARPA dollars that have been dedicated to sewers and infrastructure, but you know, maybe, and, and we can't count on it because we haven't had any success so far. But maybe we, we, I know we'll continue to try to get those dollars, you know, who knows, maybe in the future. The, but the, the question about our own ARPA dollars then. Was, and I, I asked, what, what does the three percent increase? Represent? How much money is it? And so I believe the answer was nine million. Related to that three percent increase, is that correct?
It's roughly eight to nine million.
Eight to nine million. Okay, because I think, you know, these data points are something that we need to focus on because, you know, I. We're always worried about the impact to the ratepayers, but I do think we need to understand what the real dollar amounts are. Related to what's three percent mean? It's what? Eight to nine million dollars for the system. That's what it means. And what it would be the impact to ARPA or any many we receive from the state related to ARPA. What does the three percent increase mean to a homeowner? For somebody that owns a one hundred thousand dollar home, my understanding it's about eighteen dollars. Does that sound about right?
For single family?
Yes, for single family.
Single family.
Single family.
Okay. Eighteen per year.
Okay, so and just another data point. I mean, as I think about this stuff and. Impacts and, you know, what it means to have a three percent increase. It's eighteen dollars a year for somebody that owns a hundred thousand dollar home. So I just, that's another data point. The other data points that were provided today, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that it's, it doesn't have any relevance to the, the home size or the home. Value. I, I, so the average sewer bill is really based on the average water usage. So our average customer.
All right.
Has about a, you know, five hundred and fifty dollar a year sewer bill, but that's all based on their water consumption, not, not a property value.
And the base rate.
And the base rate. So there's more to, you know, explore there, but I just wanted to, I apologize.
So, so three percent per homeowner?
Yeah, yeah, anyone who's responsible for, yeah, that who's responsible for paying their bill. Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct.
I'm so used to the hundred thousand dollar threshold when we talk about property tax or.
Yeah, some people live in very large homes and probably don't use much water, so that's.
And, well, we've talked about this a million times. It's also the base rate, which base rate plus usage. Okay. Thank you for the clarity. All right, so eighteen dollars per home then. All right, thank you. The other data point, though, that we were presented by MSD is really the most concerning of all from where I sit. Are these numbered? No, the, so this. Twenty twenty-three CIP budget request, and then you have the chart of out years. That's, that's really, when you look at that, yeah, twenty twenty-three is a hundred and forty point five million. Twenty twenty-four jumps to two hundred and ninety-six. After that is three sixty-four. I mean, these are huge increases. That are. You know, on, on the chart for the out years. So I a hundred percent agree that we need to have public hearings. Related to. Those kinds of increases, I, you know, not to say that we would. Have rate increases related to these numbers because those would be pretty high rate increases. However, this is a conversation we need to have out in the community and we have not. Had the need to have extensive hearings in the past because we've held rates flat for the last eight years. Because we were spending down the surplus. And I want to be clear on that point. This isn't a situation where we needed to increase rates because we didn't have the money in the bank. We had the money in the bank. We had a lot of money in the bank. And so the board at that time, and this is over an eight-year period. Said, well, we have excess dollars. We need to spend down the excess dollars. And so that when we need to raise rates, we will do it. But right now we don't need to raise rates because we're well above that one point seven in the bank. That, that is kind of our, our benchmark. So we have now spent down to the point you are not below. We're where we are though, where now we're in a situation to contemplate rate increases. To make sure we've still got that, the money in the bank that we need in reserve related to. Bonding and, you know, the, the debt service and the operations of the utility. And yet we need to fund the, the projects that are coming in. So that's the position where we are today. So as I think through all this stuff, and I know I'm rambling a little bit because I, you know, this is just a public hearing. We don't have to make a decision today, but these are the kinds of things that I'm thinking about. And, and the, the timing of this then becomes one where. We need to have some extensive conversations out in the community. The question for me, and I'm, I'm not even sure where I am on it, is do we have the luxury of time with the three percent? Or do we have to do a three percent now? To address some of the needs that have been outlined and given the numbers. Of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. You know, we, we need to get out early. Have pretty substantial conversations in the community with a number of different interest groups, mainly citizens, but also. Organizations that represent citizens like the township trustees and the municipal league and the first suburbs and others that have been mentioned. To make sure that the information is in front of them. And they understand what the, what the challenge is for the county commission and the utility. I mean, we really need to have those conversations in a really robust way. And two, three weeks just doesn't give us the opportunity to do that. So. These are the kinds of things I'm worrying a little bit about and, and thinking about. As we look at this increase and the timing of it. I, I know I offered at the last meeting that, you know, maybe we could do a continuation budget. And. Hold tight until we have some time to, to do these community sessions. I, I fear that it might take longer than the three months at the beginning of the year to do that. And I, I do know, and I, I've made the argument on the opposite side to my friend Todd Portun. That quarterly budgets are not a good idea and they're not. I, I mean, I, like, I know that. I'm just thinking of ways to address what's in front of us. So that is not my first option. But it's something that was put on the table and, you know, I, I want to think about. So, so anyway, Madam President. These are the things that I, I've got sheets all over my desk here. Related to percentages and, you know, the, the rate we want to keep in the bank and, and then the, the projections for upcoming years. And I will tell you of all of the things I'm looking at, it's those projections that are the most concerning. And the idea that we need, we have what I know we've all considered to be an unfunded mandate from the federal government, the consent decree drives this. Asset management too, but. You know, I am of the opinion, we need to do asset management. This is the job of the utility. And we need to do projects that reduce the flow. So we eventually save money. But the, the volume of projects. That are dictated by the federal government with absolutely no funding. To assist with putting these projects into place has got us in this situation right now. So, so those are my thoughts for the day. I'll look forward to our next hearing. When, when is the next? Hearing for MSD?
Tuesday at six o'clock.
Okay, so that's the evening meeting. Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think we are. Coming to a conclusion as it relates to the twenty twenty-three budget. I am also, I had it circled, the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, five-year CIP. Portion of this where it shows that the projects that we have for twenty twenty-three are forty-four projects. This is just tentative. And then twenty twenty-four, fifty-eight projects. So I don't want, if we end up having to do the three percent increase. That people or taxpayers think that it's going to stay at, at three percent. There's no way that it could. With adding on. Thirteen more projects than we had and that we're going to do in twenty-three. So. Definitely we need to get out there and let people know that this three percent, if we decide to, to pass it is. Maybe I can deal with the three percent. But it's gone, would have to be much more to meet the needs of this consent decree, much more than three percent. So I'm not going to try to predict what that would be, but, and as it relates to the continuation budget, I know. The administrator had indicated that if we do a quarterly budget, that we may end up. Paying more, it may have to be a higher rate of increase than three percent as we do a quarterly budget. So. So that's where I am at it and I'm, I'm just really, I mean, to come, come down from seven point two five to three percent. Is something that I'm glad we were able to figure out how to do and that things could work. That way. So I know it was hard, continues to be hard because we're still asking about reducing a little bit more. From the four to the two. And so I, I appreciate all the work that's being done. Vice President Reese?
Yeah, Madam President, I, I share with the, with the board as we are. All having these papers in front of us and crunching numbers. But I do ask to keep an open mind on the ARPA piece. That's what ARPA was here for, to help stop gaps of things. We use it for revenue replacement. We've used it to keep for safety, to keep. Sheriff's, et cetera, on the streets. It was sent to us as rescue for people in very tough times. And unfortunately, the economy has not recovered. And so I know that a lot of, just from a calculator, we get a calculator out and say, oh, a hundred thousand dollars, only fifteen dollars. Some people can't get their medicine. Some people have already maxed out their bills. When they go and they say, oh, after I pay everybody. I have zero dollars left or I got five dollars left. Or I got fifteen dollars left to say, but at least I paid for this month. I was on the phone with a constituent and. And she's an entrepreneur. She says, hey, I, I'm out here. I hope I could get a, I need a contract. To give me three hundred more dollars so I could pay. My December bills. That's just December. She goes to zero and then start again in January. So I know we talk in numbers of, oh, it's just ten dollars, fifteen dollars. You know, sometimes that might. Be a medicine that you can't get. A lot of people have really gotten down to the, you get your gas and you're like, oh, man, I got three dollars left. So they can't afford this extra because of the economy. What I'm proposing, if we can do it, and we may not be able to do it, but I don't want to say we can't do something. We were looking into, can you use ARPA for property taxes? I was coming here every week saying that. And they were, you know, oh, we're waiting, we're waiting. And thank God it came in time when Jill Schiller was sworn in. The next thing you know, we were standing at a press conference. We're able to do it, but for a couple of weeks and weeks, they kept saying, we can't, we don't know if we're going to be able to do it. So what my position is. Is if the economy is bad right now, the inflation is tough right now. Even at Thanksgiving, people couldn't afford a turkey. I mean, so it's really that tight. So the thought was. If we can afford to put the ARPA, if, if things could go right, I'm looking creatively. Can we put the ARPA as a stopgap? Hold us for a year, to hold us a year. The economy may get better. We're hoping. Economy jumps up. Obviously, we have the public hearings and we start to look at all of these things that we have to face as it relates to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. But we now have a whole year to do those types of outreaches that we talked about. We hold the people. So give them a chance to try to recover themselves from what has hit them from, whether it's COVID-related. Whether people are still getting furloughed. I mean, it's not over. People are getting furloughed right now. Furlough mean no check. So. I want to be clear that I'm not just out here with some pie in the sky. I'm saying we got to be more creative. We, we did crunch from twelve percent to seven percent and we don't crunch it down to three percent. I'm trying to get to zero percent if we could stopgap with the ARPA money. I'm trying to get to 0% if we could stopgap with the ARPA money and be creative. Now, when ARPA come back and say we can't do it, then that's a different situation. But I'm staying positive to say, let's try to look at that. If that doesn't work, then we look at something different. But I'm saying if we could try to hold and weather this storm, this economic storm that everybody's going through, I think it may be able to help. Hopefully, the economy will recover. Of course, we can't predict it, but all of us, we're on this day-by-day situation like everybody else. And that's what ARPA was supposed to be about. So if we can do it, uh I hope that we can. And I would hope that we at least keep an open mind to it. But I wanted you to know what my thoughts is. I'm looking for any discount I can. We got a a proposal for promoting this discount card uh that uh we had it, but we didn't really promote. We need to promote it again to help people with their pharmacy. I mean, everyone's looking for a break. And if we can help them, uh I think that certainly we should try to do it. So I just wanted to uh highlight that. And that's, I'm gonna keep uh hope alive and hope that uh we're able to do that as a alternative while we deal with, like you said, a storm that's getting ready to come and it's going to hit uh our our county. Thank you.
And so I heard Holly say that we should know something by Tuesday about the ARPA money. And we certainly will accept that money if it comes in so we don't have to use our own. So we definitely, uh that's a a great recommendation.
Madam President, if I could just clarify, I think we're, we are not talking about additional ARPA money, but it would it would require a reprioritization of our own ARPA funding. So maybe that's what you said, I just misunderstood.
Well, okay, I know we weren't getting any more. We would accept the money. What I'm, oh, okay, that's why you thought I was getting.
Yeah, this would, yeah, so.
Already have. And so uh for the purpose of distributing uh in this area in MSD, okay. We'll say, accept the opportunity to use the ARPA money that we already have to distribute it for the purpose of making sure that we do not have a 3% uh rate increase if we don't have to. Thank you. Okay.
And so on that point, I, that wasn't going to be my question, but I've got another question. But but in that case, I think we, I would like to see what where the ARPA dollars have already been spent and what is left, what's left to reallocate. And, you know, I I don't even have a sense of what has gone out the door and what is still sitting to be allocated.
Right. So as we're waiting for um information back from our consultant, which we, again, hopefully, hopefully by Tuesday, in parallel to that, we're looking through options.
Okay, yeah, what's what's still available? Okay.
Let's make it clear that you guys have a general knowledge of what's left in different.
Yeah, yes.
Areas. So we need to make that clear for those that are, because I would say they don't even know what they've spent. So you don't need.
I just don't have.
It's just a matter of time. What money has gone out the door? The the thing that strikes me is that um we have not seen, or maybe I missed it, comparative data with other counties that are also under, especially those that are under consent decree. Uh again, I was having a conversation in Columbus and um other communities are doing rate increases for the very same reasons. They have these projects, they need to get them done. They're um under the same consent decree uh in most cases. And and so if you could provide us with, um we always compare ourselves to some of the urbans, but even the surrounding counties, um is it is it Butler or Warren that's doing it 3%?
Butler is doing another 3% for 2023. Um they did one in 2022. Cleveland had a roughly a 4.2% annual rate increase. Um and Columbus, we don't have their 2023 yet, but 2022, it was 5%. And we're continuing to gather. I know we've had questions on Warren County. And I think Lucas, and we're continuing to gather that information and we'll share that.
Just to help us kind of round out our thinking on this, because we're we're not alone on this one. And everybody is in the same boat. So I think um it helps us better understand where we sit and what other communities are doing to address some of the same issues that we have. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimm, Ms.?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I would uh uh with uh I was thinking, um Eric, would you like to come up and then I'll go back to both of you for your mo- uh comments? Yeah, thanks. For our regular agenda items.
Thank you. Um item number one is a resolution authorizing uh an amendment to the 2023 agreement between Hamilton County and the Board of Trustees of Delhi Township and the Board of Education for the Oak Hill School District for the shared use of a rubber tire loader. This is for our salt removal operations. Uh the price went up a little bit, $312 on the on the rental price. So this is an adjustment on that. This comes out of the Roden Bridge Funds.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Jimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Hamilton County and Harrison Township for the use of uh the salt dome and rental of a rubber tired loader at the city of Harrison Salt Dome. That's $3,000 out of Roden Bridge Funds.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. Item three.
Item three is just the report on the Breezy Acres Drive uh vacation in Colrain Township. Uh we've evaluated the request and for, that was forwarded to the board from the board on June 16th. All our conditions that have been raised have been addressed by the petitioner and we see no reason for it not to move forward. Should it be approved, we'll bring a resolution to you to January 12th meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um we don't have to do anything with that.
Correct.
I don't.
Item four is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Miami Township for the use of salt dome, rental cost of a rubber tire loader agreement for the Miami Salt Dome and the amount of $2,000 out of Roden Bridge Funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I make a motion to approve item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's digress and go back to uh comments and motions by the commissioners. And I just had one comment that I did attend uh the 55th anniversary. I had it written down. Um Dolores Lindsay was recognized at the Healthcare Connection. They had a uh 55 anniversary gala and it was awesome and they recognized her. And um she's just an, she was the CEO of Healthcare Connection um and truly enjoyed it. And truly, I know she's going to be probably still involved in the community, but it was a great event. And other than that, it was our evening budget hearing that we had Tuesday evening. We had uh four people who made comments. And so we thank them. And we will be having, that was our, no, that was our last. Yeah, okay. Um that was our last budget hearing. So we'll be looking forward to trying to pass the budget December the 15th. Vice President Alicia.
Yes, uh thank you. I also, all of us obviously attended the um the meeting uh the evening meeting. Um and as you uh indicated last night, that people can still come to the uh general meeting during the public comment and they'll still be able to be uh heard. However, the 15th is the date that we're uh voting on it. So um probably next Tuesday would be better or send us information if you have it. We'll still be gathering information from the public. Wanted to just, um I also had a meeting with um the administration and um Mr. Steve Leeper, 3CDC regarding the convention district. And um as well as uh had a separate meeting with Julie Calvert uh regarding uh Visit Cincinnati, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And there were just a couple of things that I wanted to just bring to the board's attention, which I think is uh all um connected, if you will. One of the things that I think that um this board, we will be facing with some major budgetary challenges, if you will. Uh we just heard one MSD in terms of the future and what that's going to mean for the ratepayers. Uh we have a um uh stadium uh that we were presented last uh this year, I guess, $500 million and counting for just the renovation of the NFL Stadium. And then we have a lease agreement that expires in 2026 that uh we will still be having discussion. And I could barely go anywhere or get any interview without someone asking me about uh have you all, have you all gotten the information as it relates to the naming rights uh situation? So it's uh an issue that's on people's minds. So with a a cadre of huge projects, uh NFL Stadium, uh that's Paycor Stadium now, uh 500 million to a billion, with a convention district proposal of 500 million as it relates to a hotel. And uh I had talked with our administrator and there will have to be some public subsidy. We don't even know how much for the hotel. And then a possible uh outdoor expansion of convention center of $200 million. And not to mention, uh there is uh some desire to do the Fort Washington way to put decks on top of that at 100 million and counting. And so when you start to think about this, you say, well, wait a minute. You know, these are all good projects, but at the same time, who's going to pay for all of it? And so I just think we need to be creative. Uh it's hard to tell ratepayers and taxpayers that everything is going up for you, but at the same time, we can be creative when these big projects. Where I'm at is I'm looking for a win-win. Uh I just like last Sunday, I wanted the Bengals to win. I want them to win again, but I also want the taxpayers to win. And so I just want us to be as creative uh as it relates, I've asked this of the administration to be creative. Uh sometimes I I may bring up something that we may not, we may not have done in 20 years or we just not the way we always do it. Uh but these are not the always we do at times that we live in. And I think that we need to send a message of prioritization on which of these projects we're able to do. It's just like uh we get in Christmas time and I've got nieces and nephews and they've got a long list. But I tell each of them, give me your top two, because Auntie can't pay for all of these things on the list. You're gonna have to go and get others to help. Go get Papa and go get your mom and dad. And and maybe you can get everything, but we, I can't do it all. And I think that's important for the county to express that we cannot do it all and we can't do it alone. So when I bring up these things, I'm bringing them up with the um the intent, if you will. My mentality is the taxpayers first, because if I was a corporation, my shareholders would be my first priority. Not uh I'm going to do it and shareholders, you pay for it. And I'm trying to help another company. I'm here to help this particular group of shareholders, and that's how I look at the taxpayers. So my goal is to look at how can we change the funding formulas? How can we be a little more creative? How can we stretch the dollar so that we can have a win-win? Win for the taxpayers and a win for some of these projects um that are good projects. With that being said, in my meetings and conversations and my extensive background in tourism and knowing both from a customer standpoint, what does a convention want? What gets a convention to come and book? Because I've actually booked conventions for here. I think that there are some things that we should uh know about. And I know that we don't get a chance to, all three of us talk, so that's why I'm putting it out here so that my colleagues and the public, the shareholders, the taxpayers know my thinking. Um one is the convention district would, for convention center, the expansion would be outside. Now, it's good to have some sprucing up, but they, we we do not really gain a lot of square footage. We only gained 13,000 extra square feet, which does not help us in exhibit space. When you're a convention, it's not getting you additional conventions because of that space and majority of it being outdoors. It looks nice, it's pretty, but it doesn't get us additional business. We were talking about the funding model, which I'm very familiar with, the transit occupancy tax funding model. And one of the things I'd like to put on the table, uh the city of Cincinnati is looking at selling the railroad. It's a billion-dollar asset. Uh it's going to be mean big things for the city of Cincinnati. They'll be able to borrow against it. They have, or they could put the money in the bank, get interest on it. And when you look at the convention district, I had asked the administrator, the county, we do not own any property around there. We don't own the convention center. We don't control Elm Street. We don't own, we won't own the garage. We don't own the property where the hotel is going to go because it's not going over there with Millennium. And at the end of the day, we don't even own the Millennium Hotel as the administrator has pointed out to us. Our name is not on any deeds. Unlike on the banks, the county name is on deeds. So we don't own any of the property. And uh with the railroad coming in possibly at a billion dollars, my thought is to go back to the city and see if they would maybe lead that project. And then that would open us up to lead the project that we have to do, which is the stadium. And nobody is helping us with that project. We got to lead it. We got to fund it. We got to figure it out. And then that way, we've got two projects. And we can also make the stadium more tourism-friendly as we're looking at how we're going to redevelop it. So I wanted to put that on the table as a funding possibility because it opens up, it frees up the money uh that we do have. And again, we don't own any land around it. It's it's, you know, it's good for us to smile and be a part of it, but we really don't own any land around there. I do think, though, as it relates to the hotel, there would be some subsidy that is required. And what I saw from the presentation, beyond that subsidy, they're asking for $10 million for us to put up. 15 million five has already been given through the Port Authority regarding that developer that was voted on uh that I did not support, but it's been, it's done, 5 million. So they asked for 15 million, which means another 10 million they're asking for the county to put in. But my question was, where, what, where do we play in this space? Because we don't own any property. And um now that the city will have the $1 billion potentially, uh we may not even be needed in putting our funding there versus putting our funding uh around the stadium, which we do own and we are on the deed. So just wanted to put that out as we're looking at creative options in terms of funding options. Um I think it's very uh important to put all the chips on the table. Also, uh my understanding from my meeting uh with uh with Julie was that doing the hotel first as phase one uh is not a bad option because they're, one of their top priorities is this hotel. Now, uh the people say we'd like to have a spruced up uh convention center. Well, that might be some paint, some carpet and some some minor things. But uh we have conventions and events already booked in the convention center. And how conventions and these big groups work is if they cancel, they got to pay all the hotel costs and the convention cost. If we cancel, we got to pay all of their hotel obligations and all the costs that came with it. So if they've already booked Cincinnati and we come in and say, we got to shut down convention center because we want to do a, do some sprucing up and expansion. Well, all that, somebody's got to pay these organizations, not only their costs, but they also have another fee on top of that that we would have to pay those organizations. So I wanted to put all those pieces on the table. Uh all of these things matter because they begin to look at something that falls on some, whether it's a hotel tax, by the way, our hotel tax is, I think, the third or fourth highest in the country. Uh with this funding model that's being proposed, we would be one number, I think, number one or number two in the country, and we're not even a large market. So it's very tough and we border Kentucky. We border another state. So per say, well, I just go to Kentucky. And we don't make anything. So we're at about uh 19%, I think now, or 18 or 19. We're 18, we'll be up to 19, almost 20% to stay in Cincinnati. Come on, we got to be competitive as well. So wanted to put those up based on my understanding of booking events, my experience of booking events, my experience as a deputy director of tourism and understanding of expanding a convention center and what that entails. Those are the things that I'd like to uh make sure that that is considered and put on the table. Uh, those are the things that I'd like to uh make sure that that is considered and put on the table as we're having these discussions. I don't want to just get excited. I want to look at, do we own anything? Or why are we at the table? Are we only at the table because we got a checkbook? Uh, can this be funded a different way without us? Can we maybe fund certain things but can't do this? And then we've got a big stadium that no one's coming in to rescue us. No one's coming in to help us. We have to figure this thing out and that affects the taxpayers. Um, also, I wanted to highlight that um, in addition to that, um, I was a little concerned as we stand on this, this uh, everything going up on the taxpayers' backs. We just talked about MSD, we talked about the property taxes. Now, we, we talked about hotel tax going up to almost twenty percent. Now, I understand in Mister Ludo's report that he submitted to us to alert us that the zoo is looking at putting something on the ballot to increase taxes again. I don't want our theme, and I, I think I'm pretty uh reasonable. Um, but I don't want our theme to be, oh, just put it on the backs of the taxpayers, they'll pay it. It's only fifteen here, twenty here, thirty there, nineteen percent over here, go up on this. And here's now the zoo saying they need to go up on taxes. Um, I want to put it out that I want to look at the hundred million dollars sitting in the children's services tax that's not encumbered and I understand is not gonna all be utilized. And I'm looking at, how can we give a rebate? So I'm looking at, how do we give a rebate, a tax break? And particularly in the economy. Now, if the economy was going great, I might have a different opinion. But the economy is going bad and people are out here, they just really can't make it. I'm talking about regular, I mean, people who used to could make it are saying I can't hardly make it. And so now we've got here, because I don't want us to get the reputation of, oh, just run down to the county. They'll, they'll raise the rates on everybody. Oh, they're, just run down to the county, uh, they'll find the money. Just run down to county. No, we got to start putting some resistance to everybody running down here. And when they come down here, they're handing us a bill. They're handing us a debt. They're handing us an idea with no money. We've got to stop that and um, I, I'm not saying, of course, you know, I love my zoo, but you know, come on. People are struggling right now and uh just trying to make the ends meet. And I think those voices need to be heard. Uh, so I just wanted to highlight those things as all of these pieces coming together. Um, not against progress, a lot of the progress you see around, I voted for it. But we gotta look at the economy and we've got to get a better deal. We gotta get a new, I'm looking for a new formula, a better deal. And for us to come to the table and not just, we yes or no on raising rates or raising taxes, but we're sitting down being creative and I've indicated that uh with the administrator Aludo and I put some ideas out. Uh, hopefully that uh will be shared with you all and, and um able to look at how we might be able to do all of these things, but have a double win, win for the taxpayers first and then a win for the idea that's put forward. So uh, just wanted to say that, Madam President, when I saw that in the uh, in the report, it kind of jumped out at me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. I wanted to note that we got a couple of comments related to the MSD public hearing. Um, Tom Croft was one, but this seems more extensive than what he presented in his two minutes. The other one's from Marilyn Wall, and so I just want to make sure that these are entered for the record. Um, Marilyn's is very interesting. It's always, Marilyn always gives us very interesting documents. It's very well thought out.
Um, representing Sierra Club.
Sierra Club, yeah, that's right. Uh, and she did testify within the last couple of weeks, but she's now presented a, another document for us. Um, also, I, I also was gonna reference the budget document. We've got a more recent version of the budget document dated December eighth today um, related to some of the things that we um have in front of us to agree or not agree on. Um, so I will look forward to um having that conversation take place with the chiefs of staff so we can start to sort out where the priorities are, if there are any additional priorities for the budget. Um, two other things, uh, one is I, as I mentioned earlier, this uh County Commissioners Association Winter Conference, their annual conference is happening right now. Um, and I was up there yesterday and then this morning uh for the conference and I moderated a session yesterday. Uh, Michael Patton came up as an expert related to the Benefits Bridge. So we all know about the Benefits Cliff, but the county, Hamilton County, I think the only urban county, got some money from the state for the Benefits Bridge to try to figure out how we keep people stable instead of going off the Benefits Cliff, um, keep them stable until they are able to self-sustain and um not use any kind of uh public assistance. And so it was really informative. Um, we might want to have him in front of us to, to give us um uh kind of a download on that, because we were a pilot program for the state for the Benefits Bridge. And it was really interesting content and I, I'm grateful that Michael went up. There was also quite a bit of conversation about CityLink, um, that's being replicated in other parts of the state. And some of the attendees were interested in coming down and taking a look at CityLink, so um, we're gonna try to facilitate that as well. I also um was um elected to be the treasurer of the organization this morning, um, so I will continue um.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I've, I've been on the board as the secretary, but now I'm gonna be the treasurer. So I, I guess that's a, I think it's a lateral move. I'm not sure. But anyway, it uh, it's very interesting and I'm grateful for the support. Um, lastly, I just want to make an announcement. Um, we have quarterly meetings of the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. Uh, and many, many of the providers and partners come to these meetings. So I just did want to announce that the next meeting is tomorrow at eleven o'clock. I was gonna say it's at the coroner's office, but I'm gonna say it's at the Dr. Odell Moreno Owens Coroner's Office, Hamilton County Crime Laboratory. I don't want to misstate the name of the facility and I'm, I'm very excited to, I'll try to commit that to memory in the future. Um, but all, all folks are welcome. This is an update from HCARC and the different um, the different subcommittees about the progress that's being made. And it's also an opportunity for folks in the community to do some Q and A. Uh, we're always open to Q and A and so um everyone's welcome to attend, so I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm just wondering, is it usually on a Friday? I didn't think it was.
I think it has been recently and we've had it at the coroner's office uh and, and lunch is provided. So yeah, it's been on different days, but yeah, tomorrow's the day for this quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that uh we were talking early about the zoo levy and that um the county does not give any money to the zoo or for its function. But uh if the zoo levy is presented, that the residents would have to uh vote that yes or no for additional taxes. So that's one place we don't give any money to, but I will uh move forward to our county. I started to say, Commissioner, County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of comments and then um one uh by leave in particular. Um, first comment, uh, had the pleasure of welcoming on uh several new employees to the county this morning. Um, uh, brought on uh two employees under the board, one in um, uh, in the Department of Environmental Services um and one up in our building department, new building inspector, as well as five employees uh over at Job and Family Services. So I want to welcome all those individuals to the, to the county. Uh, secondly, um, as the board has been uh very aware, we've been working hard uh to get all of our emergency rental assistance dollars allocated out and, out into the community. Um, we received a notification yesterday, which I forwarded on to the board right before this meeting uh that the Treasury Department has reallocated from other communities thirty-six million dollars to Hamilton County uh to uh continue our emergency rental assistance programming, which um will provide us with the ability to do some extensive programming uh and extend extensive, extensions of programming uh into next year and beyond. I think those dollars have to be spent uh by uh twenty twenty-five or obligated by twenty twenty-five. So it gives us additional flexibility in time to get monies out uh, out into the community and make sure that we're helping people uh who is in particular uh uh have been financially impacted over the past several years. So it's exciting news. I wanted to make sure that the board uh was aware. Um, finally, Commissioners, one, I do have one by leave. Uh, I have a uh budget adjustments on as by leave item number one uh in your packet. Um, it is budget adjustment thirty-seven for various grant closeouts, central IT security, uh court of common pleas, juror fees, board of elections, ballot printing uh and an emergency management grant appropriation and two engineer projects. Um, happy to walk through more detail and uh Assistant Administrator Brugan is here, who can help us with that if needed.
Well, if we can just give the total for all of that.
Uh, see, the total in, of the entire adjustment is for four point eight three threes uh four million eight hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Obviously, um spread across all of those um various functions.
Thank you. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Uh, yeah, by leave one. Okay. Okay, no questions. I, I make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. No further by leaves.
Very good. We'll move on to our consent agenda items, items five through seventeen. Just in general, I'll make a, since we're late, a little later than usual. But um item five is thirty thousand nine hundred, that's going to go toward a replacement vehicle for the Sheriff's Department. And then item six is a uh uh, the Board of Hamilton County on behalf of stadia and parking for the Paycor Stadium, training and hydrotherapy renovation, one, one million, a little over one million. Uh, Resolution seven, authorize an agreement between Axon, A X O on, X O N Enterprises uh for uh the Sheriff's Department for Public Safety Video Surveillance, uh equipment, three point seven million. Uh, and I just wanted to indicate under JFS, we have two residential treatment services, each um two hundred thousand apiece. And then um eleven and twelve, uh four hundred thousand for each one for independent living.
Service.
And then uh finally, uh, well, not finally, but the one I wanted to talk about. Item thirteen, a resolution, authorize an agreement between the Law, Law Office of Hamilton County Public Defender and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of the Department of Job and Family Services for a guardian at Lydum and it's uh two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, and then I'll go down to item fourteen, a resolution to approve amendment of PY twenty twenty-one Targets of Opportunity Care Act, CDBG hyphen CB application for one point three million. Uh, any questions or comments on the consent items? Vice President Reese.
I, I have just one comment on item number six. It's uh, just wanted to highlight it. Um, and just to show that um, I think that we have been trying in good faith to uh keep the uh commitments that are in the, in the lease for the Bengals. Um, this is a hydrotherapy room and certainly uh something that will help the players uh and the team. And just to say that, you know, we're moving forward on these items. Uh, we did a replay screen and I think we did some padding. Uh, thank God we did it. I saw us jump up into the wall. I said, oh, gosh. Uh, but we have the padding down there. Now we've got the hydrotherapy renovation of a million, over a million dollars that we're doing. And just wanted to make sure, highlight that as I've indicated to uh, to our administrator. Uh, one of the things I'd like for us to do as it relates to this lease, as we're going into it and renovations, is to have a, maybe at one of the staff meetings or a couple of staff meetings, highlighting what's going on so that the, everything is very transparent for the taxpayers as well. Um, but I wanted to just highlight when people ask me, say, well, have they called you? Have you gotten the information? We still, I guess, haven't gotten the information that the administrator, and he can speak on that, that we've asked for. But we are still moving forward with our commitments um and honoring our commitments. And I hope that we can have a, a better type of negotiation where both sides um is transparent, getting the information, because we have to answer to the, to the taxpayers. So uh, I didn't know Jeff, if you wanted to comment on that. But at number six, we're moving forward with, I just want to highlight every time I look up, we got something on the calendar and we are moving forward uh with our good side and good faith in honoring the contract.
Yes, I just uh briefly, so just a little bit, since we're on the topic, a little bit more on the project. This is a uh project to uh improve the access point for the hydrotherapy room, uh replace two uh of the original pools that were with the stadium with one uh larger pools. There's a lot of mechanical replacements that go along with it, new flooring, training offices and cubicles, et cetera. So uh, to your point, uh, Madam Vice President, uh, I think we're doing what we need to do to stay um uh in good faith with the, with, with the lease and make sure we're partnering with the team to make sure that uh the stadium uh state, the, the bones of the stadium and the main uh infrastructure in the stadium um uh remain uh consistent with other NFL, with other NFL stadiums. So uh, to your question, we've not yet received any additional information. Um, I'll provide the board with an update when we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
No, I have no comments. Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve items five through seventeen.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention to both of my colleagues, OKI is asking for uh you to fill out a nomination form if you want to be a part of that organization for twenty twenty-three. I didn't know if you guys got a copy of the email saying to fill out your form. Uh, if not, I can, I can't forward it to you, but I can make sure that the chiefs of staff get it, okay?
Thank you.
So uh with no further business, I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.